Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Board of Trustees. Today's date is August 19, 2025. The time is 5:04 and this meeting is now called to order. For our first item, or second item, item number two, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. We will now have a moment of silence. At this time, we will move on to recognitions and for recognitions, I call up Ms. Musias.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Board President Hanani, Ms. Aguirre and Board members. Please join us in the front. We are proud to present this evening's recognitions and highlight the inspiring work our students and staff are doing across this great district. For our first recognition, we would like to show our gratitude for Colonel Brendan Gallagher's dedication and service. Please join us, sir. His service has been to the El Paso Independent School District as the outgoing ex-officio member of the Board. Colonel Gallagher was commissioned as an infantry officer via ROTC at John Hopkins University in 2001. Colonel Gallagher holds a BA and MA in International Relations from John Hopkins University and an MA and PhD in Public Affairs from Princeton University. We thank him for his service to our nation, Fort Bliss and El Paso. Enjoy your retirement, sir. Don't go too far because we need another photo op, but at this time, we would like to welcome the incoming ex-officio member Colonel Michael Soika. Colonel Soika is a 2002 graduate of the United States Military Academy where he was commissioned as an armor officer after graduating with a degree in mechanical engineering. Colonel Soika is the new garrison commander for Fort Bliss and our new ex-officio. Welcome.
And can we have a picture with both of you, please? Thank you.
All right, another huge round of applause. Thank you. Our next recognition is for a well-deserving student from Franklin High School. Sebastian Garcia was selected as one of the recipients of the Student Heroes Award by the State Board of Education. Sebastian completed outstanding volunteer service that benefits his fellow students, school and his communities. Here to present the award is Gustavo Rabelles from the State Board of Education.
Board President Hanani, members of the Board and Ms. Aguirre, hello, I'm Gustavo Rabelles and I'm proud to be your representative on the Texas State Board of Education. I'm also proud to have been a staff member of this amazing school district and to have served the children and educators of EPISD. It is a true honor to recognize one of El Paso's own, Franklin High School alum Sebastian Garcia, on receiving the 2025 Student Hero Award. The Student Hero Award is given to young people who demonstrate an extraordinary commitment to service and volunteerism. Through his leadership, Sebastian helped expand the reach and impact of Franklin's PTEC program, making sure more students could access opportunities to connect in education to real careers in healthcare. On behalf of the entire State Board of Education and especially on behalf of the students and schools of District One, stretching from El Paso to Laredo, I want to congratulate Sebastian Garcia for being named a 2025 Student Hero. Sebastian, you have made your school, your city and your state proud. Thank you for showing us what it means. Thank you for showing us what it means to lead with both strength and heart.
Next, we would like to recognize the first cohort to complete the Empower Fellowship for aspiring principals. The goal of the program is to strengthen El Paso ISD's leadership pipeline, developing assistant principals into leaders who are ready and equipped to successfully lead our schools. We are excited to announce that five of our fellows are now sitting principals. Huge recognition. Perfect. At this time, we would also like to welcome the second cohort of fellows that has begun this important journey. Big round of applause for them. Middle gentleman on the side. Thank you. This concludes our recognitions for this evening.
At this time, we will move on to item number six, a public meeting. This item is posted as a public meeting, therefore after the presentation by the administration, we will be opening the floor for anyone who would like to address the board regarding this matter. If we could first have, oh, public forum, shush, public forum. If we could have, first have our public forum. Trustee Quayre?
If I can please have IT play the video.
By serving the educational needs of all schools within the district, board meetings must be focused on meeting this charge. In meeting that charge, the district board meetings are public meetings under the Texas Open Meetings Act, they conduct the business of the district. They are not, however, meetings of the public. Therefore, all persons in attendance are expected to display civility and decorum, but in respect for other persons, without the use of insulting, profane, threatening or abusive language. Public comment will not be used for personal attacks. In addition, you are directed to the district's complaint procedures and board policy regarding employee, student, parent or public complaints. A deputy superintendent of administration is in attendance. If you wish to discuss a matter with him, please know that during public forum, specific factual information or recitation of existing policy may be furnished in response to inquiries. However, the board may not deliberate or decide any subject that does not fit on its agenda.
Okay. First speaker for open forum is Adrian Cifuentes. And Mr. Cifuentes, you have three minutes from when you start speaking.
Okey dokey.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Adrian Cifuentes and I teach at Andrus High School over at District Five. Serving the diverse community of Northeast El Paso, I started with this district at age 22. I'm 40 now. I've grown up here as an educator and I'm still here because I love this work, I love our students and I love my community. But I need you to hear this. The paperwork has become suffocating. And it's not the kind that helps kids, it's the kind that steals time away from them. We are asked to fill out forms that repeat what already exists. We're told to copy the same objectives in multiple places. We're asked to submit the same information in slightly different formats over and over again. None of that makes a lesson stronger. None of that helps a child learn. It only proves that a form was filled out. Meanwhile, what gets overlooked? The real work, reviewing student essays, calling parents to build community, trust, collaborating with colleagues to plan lessons that actually meet our students where they are. That's the work that matters. And that's what gets pushed aside when paperwork takes priority. I worry that administration has become more focused on whether words are written on a board or entered into a form than whether kids are learning in the classroom. The checkboxes are getting more attention than the students themselves. Think about your favorite teacher. Was it the paperwork that made them unforgettable? Did you love them for the way they filled out forms or the words that they wrote on the board? Or was it because you knew they cared and they put their energy into creating the best learning experience possible for you? I'm not saying we don't need accountability, but the balance is broken. True internalization doesn't happen on a checklist. It happens in the planning in the classroom in those small but powerful moments when a teacher connects with a student. Mr. Osterland, you know Andrus, you know our kids in District Five and to the entire board, you hold the power to shift this culture. Let's stop measuring teachers by paperwork and start focusing on what really matters, student learning. I've given, I've given nearly two decades of my life to this district. I'm asking you to give me back the most valuable thing that you can, time to actually teach.
Thank you, Mr. Cifuentes.
Next speaker Jenny Solo. Jenny Solo. Okay. Next speaker, Mr. Ross Moore.
Board President Hanani, Board members, interim superintendent, Ms. Gary. My name is Ross Moore. I'm the president of the El Paso American Federation of Teachers. I want to remind you that last board meeting, two months ago, I remind, that I pointed out that Texas Education Code 11-164B states, quote, "The Board of Trustees shall," I'll say that again, "shall review paperwork requirements imposed on classroom teachers and transfer to existing non-in instructional staff a reporting task that can be reasonably accomplished by that staff." We've had two months, so my question is, have you started that review? Simple yes or no question? Okay, your expression says no, Ms. Hanani, with respect. That tells me four things. You don't know what is required of teachers. You don't care about the, about that. Mr. Cifuentes gave you a good start point. You don't care about that or the impact it has on employees and students. You don't care about what the law says. So tomorrow, I call Austin to start getting some things rolling. And respectfully trustees, it says the board, not just the board president, not you guys. And as Mr. Cifuentes said, you have the power to fix this and take this paperwork load off of my members and your teachers and let them do what they need to. Next question, what is the real price of opening Lamar? Word is, real cost to do it right and safely is far more than the $3.2 million stated. I'm hearing up to between 10 and 12 million to do it right and the campus is barely at 20% capacity. I asked admin for the numbers. I was told submit an ORR. In other words, FOAD. Okay, so here's the ORR for the interim superintendent with a copy furnished to the board president. Thank you very much for your attention and please fix this problem.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Next speaker, Karen Galanter. Did I pronounce that right, ma'am?
You did.
Okay, just want to make sure. All right, you have three minutes from when it starts, ma'am.
Board President Hanani, interim superintendent Aguirre and members of the Board.
Board President Hanani, interim superintendent Aguirre, and members of the board. My name is Karen Galanter, and I'm here to address two rumors that have started circulating in the world of secondary teachers. The first is that teachers will be losing their PLC period next year. This may work if it's thought out well, but the truth is that this district has just barely earned a TEA rating of B after two years of being a C-rated district. Teachers do appreciate having a PLC, especially those who are new to the subject area that they're teaching. The PLC has helped them learn from their colleagues and feel more confident with new materials to teach. And as one instructional coach pointed out, the district has achieved a B-rating by the skin of its teeth, and now there's talk of changing how we teach and prep again. If the change is made, the district should consider how PLCs can still be effectively implemented. In that case, the most effective way is to have a PLC without an assigned class period is to give teachers a PLC planning day every nine weeks, which would mean allocating more money to subs. The question then becomes, is this something that the district is prepared and wants to do? Secondly, I'd like to address a rumor that started floating around the secondary schools again, and that is the belief that the district is looking to get rid of bookroom clerks and have librarians take over as computer tech duties that the bookroom clerk, that the bookroom clerks currently run. We are several weeks into the school year, and my bookroom clerk spent the majority of her time these three weeks handling student computer issues. This is not a job that can be done in 20 minutes a day by librarians. It's not even a job that can be done in half a day. Being a bookroom clerk, who is essentially a computer clerk, a computer tech and clerk, is a full-time job. Being a school librarian is also a full-time job. We help out when we can, but our schedules don't allow for being the main person handling devices. This is not a librarian matter, it's an IT personnel issue with an IT job, full stop. I ask that the district think strategically, get input from multiple schools and departments, and really analyze the data to determine what has moved this district from a C to a B rating. Keep what works, change what doesn't, use evidence and data to make an informed decision, and think through the changes before making them. That's what you ask of teachers, and that's what we ask of you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Galanter.
All right. Next speaker, Alma Kelly. Alma Kelly. Next speaker, Norma De La Rosa. Ms. De La Rosa.
Good afternoon, Ms. Hanani, members of the board, Ms. Aguirre. I'm Norma De La Rosa, president of El Paso Teachers Association. Preparing a district for the first day when students return is a process that is pretty much year-round, but the most demanding part takes place during the summer when master schedules and teacher schedules are finalized, students are assigned classes, new teachers and employees are hired, buildings are thoroughly cleaned and repairs made, and bus schedules are made. There will be rough starts to a new school year, some rougher than others, but this year's start, no words to describe, or let's say, words that I cannot use in public. Personnel were being told one day before reporting they were being displaced, several campuses were without HVAC, elevators not working, and teachers having to go up and downstairs with their equipment. But as we all know, issues with transportation were not just a hiccup, that was a disaster. Routes incorrectly planned out, bus drivers and monitors not getting the time needed to learn their routes and stops. What was normally a period of four days, four hours a day, reduced to one day for only two hours. Buses filled to the brim with 70-plus pre-K through eight kids and no monitors to assist the drivers. Trying to learn who the kids are and match to their stop goes on and on. Mechanics being pulled out, buses unsafe because mechanics are being, are given their own routes to drive AM and PM. Inevitably, there are going to be problems, and there were, but I am here to say loud and clear that what happened the first day, the first week, and still today, is not the fault of the drivers and the monitors. Yet they are being made the scapegoats by parents, the media, and those out there who have nothing better to do than criticize and crucify these hard-working people for something out of their control. Because of the mistakes, drivers and monitors have been pulled from their routes, a number of them have quit, and others are seriously considering the same. Transportation has long had its issues, and it continues, but I will leave you with this. There needs to be a change, change that will show respect, courtesy, and appreciation for what they do, not the punitive and retaliatory actions that have been directed at them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. De La Rosa.
Next speaker, Genevieve Ariola. Ms. Ariola.
Good evening, board members. My name is Genevieve Ariola, and I am currently a seventh grader at Young Women's Steam Research Preparatory Academy. First, I'd like to say that I love YWA, and the school makes me feel good about myself. However, this year, they have instituted a new dress code. This dress code is to be purchased from Lands End. What went out to parents is that we have until October 20th to be in full uniform or face consequences. The problem is that this uniform will cost families upwards of $500. The skirt, which we are required to have at least one, is $50. Shortsleeve blouses are $35 each. Longsleeve blouses are $40 each. Pants are $35, and the blazer is $165. Special socks and ties are also required. In order to be outfitted with a week's worth of clothing, my mother would have to spend around $700. Why? Didn't you, the board, just pass a universal dress code for all EPISD schools to lessen the financial burden on parents? This money's not even going to school funds. The sad thing is, most of us ladies are continuing to grow, and these uniforms more than likely will not even fit us next year. Not to mention, I know of few friends who aren't even able to afford one blazer nor the uniform, already struggling to make ends meet. I'd like to mention, YWA is not a private school. We are a public, young ladies-only school, so the uniform we currently have should be enough. So does YWA get a pass on that? As a publicly funded school, it seems to me that this dress code is suited more for a private school. I know my cousins wanted to come to this school, but there's no way that they can afford it. Fun in place to help those who need it, but it should be equal across the board. YWA is all about trust, respect, and responsibility. But they just haven't thought about how this is really going to affect families and students with this added stress they put on us. I urge you to look into this matter. Thank you, and have a wonderful rest of your evening.
Thank you, Ms. Ariola.
And last speaker for open forum is Jessica Grijalva. Jessica Grijalva. Let's see. First speaker, so there are one, two, three speakers signed up for B1. First speaker is Norma De La Rosa. And B1 is adoption of proposed revisions to board policy, FNCE local, student conduct, personal communication devices, electronics.
Excuse me. Just to be clear, are we calling the public meeting to discuss the 25-26 district proposed tax rate?
The first was taking them all together, but I think Trusty Quer says he's gonna take them before the item now.
All of the public speakers?
Right.
Okay. You can do that. The law doesn't change until September 1st, but it's good practice.
First speaker for item B1, Ms. De La Rosa.
Good afternoon, Ms. Hanani, members of the board, Ms. Aguirre. I'm Norma De La Rosa, president of El Paso Teachers Association. Texas Education Code 37.082 was already in place regarding no cell phones to be on or used in the classroom. It was already a part of the EPISD Student Code of Conduct, as well as the consequences. This evening, you are approving the EPISD board policy that revises the language in policy FNCE local and strengthens very clearly the consequences. Even though this was already in statute, the most difficult was implementing the law and policy. Teachers who monitored and followed policy were easily discouraged to continue to implement this policy. Why? Because they had no support from their administrators. Why? Because it was too trivial, not worth the time or effort, didn't want to have to deal with difficult and angry parents because their child's phone had been taken away, and it was now costing them $15. Administrators will now have no choice. Parents need to understand that cell phones will not be allowed to be used at all during the school day unless their child meets the exception. Most importantly, students will need to understand that this is now the law, and there will be consequences. In light of the past where teachers had no support, we hope that now this will be taken seriously by all, that our teachers will receive the support they need from their campus administration, and that in the end, teachers can teach with one less interruption and students can learn. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. De La Rosa.
Next speaker, same item, B1, Olivia Neal. Olivia Neal. Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Olivia Neal, and I am a student here at El Paso High. I first want to acknowledge that I understand that the restrictions our place are a part of a state law, and I completely respect our schools must follow it, but I'm asking, I'm not asking you to ignore it, I'm just asking for flexibility on how this law is enforced. I go to, I go to school where our communication is based extremely like online. We use Band, we use Band, we use Instagram, we use all these online programs through our phone. Now, we use QR codes. Now, how do we sign up, sign in, do all this stuff now? We have to individually line up behind four computers. This is an example from a StuGo meeting. Four computers we line up, we type in our name, we type in our ID number. That takes about 20 minutes out of our lunch because we can't scan a QR code, because we can't type in a link, because we can't communicate through our phone. That is during lunch. I understand, like, I, we have something in common. Like, I do want to learn, I do want to do all these things, but I can't do that if I'm constantly having to spend 30 minutes to sign in through something, and not knowing where my class would be, not knowing where my club is meeting. I am a student who is a part of like 17 different extracurriculars where I need to know where to be, when to be at, what day, what time during lunch, and I can't do that if I have to, if I, I don't communicate with my club because we don't have our cell phones, we can't check the Instagram for our posts, we can't check anything off the boxes of what we need to do. I, again, I know it's a state law, but I'm just asking for flexibility. I mean, just another example would be communication. I went home with the wrong person today because I couldn't text my mom, who was taking me home. My mom couldn't tell me who was taking me home, so I went home with the wrong person, which added 30 minutes to my commute. Picture that every day. Like, that is, is just, it's a nightmare to do with. It's, yeah. Another example would be audio. I can't use my AirPods to listen to videos. I have to read a 20-minute transcript of a YouTube video to do an assignment. I can't listen through my AirPods. I'm not gonna buy a new, I can't use headphones, period. So thank you for your time, and I just, I acknowledge that it's a law, but I just, I want flexibility on how this law would be mandated in school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Neal.
Hello. My name is Jessica Grijalva, and I believe my name was already called. Would I be able to speak, or should I wait my turn? Yes? Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you. Hello, I would like to talk to you today about a topic that affects students, families, and schools alike, the affordability of school uniforms. This is specifically regarding the Young Women's Academy and the increase that, of the uniforms that you would like to increase. School uniforms are more than just clothing. They symbolize unity, equality, and school pride. But for many families, the cost of uniforms can be a heavy financial burden. Imagine a family with multiple children attending the same school, buying uniforms for each child, it can add up quickly. And some families, it can become a source of stress and worry. Affordable uniforms ensure that every, that every student, regardless of their family, family's financial situation, has access to the same opportunities. When uniforms are priced fairly, students are in singled out or judged based on what they wear. They can focus on learning and participating in school activities and building friendships rather than worrying about whether they can afford the latest, trendiest uniform. Making uniforms affordable also benefits schools and communities. It promotes a sense of equality and belonging. When every student wears the same uniform, the focus shifts from competition over clothing to collaboration and mutual respect. Uniforms, schools, I'm sorry, schools... I'm not used to reading off my phone, sorry. They can focus on learning and participating in school activities and building friendships rather than worrying about if they can afford the latest uniform. Schools become more inclusive, and students learn their value is not determined by what they wear. Moreover, affordable uniforms help families save money in the long run. This simple change can make a big difference in the daily life of the overall family's well-being. In conclusion, affordable, in conclusion, affordable school uniforms are not just about saving money, they're about fairness and equality and creating a supportive environment for all students, which is something I believe that you all have implicated in your policy regarding uniforms, that we all be included. By keeping uniforms accessible, we can ensure that every child has a chance to succeed, feel confident, and be part of the community that is treated equally. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grijalva.
Next speaker, also for item B1, Adali, sorry, Adlay Yáñez. Did I pronounce that right?
Adley.
Adley, that's it? Oh. Even easier. All right, sir. We got three minutes, sir. Thank you.
Hello, members of the board. My name is Adley Yáñez, and I go to El Paso High School, and I want to state my issues with the new cellphone ban. First and foremost, the, I want to state my issue because the, if there's something, if there's an emergency happening at our school campus, I need to, I want to text my mom, or I want to call my parents and let them know if I'm okay and where I'm at. And I talked to my mom about it, and she said that anytime there's a lockdown or hold, texts usually get sent out to parents 20 minutes after the occurrence of a lockdown. And anything could happen between those 20 minutes if it's a life-threatening situation. And they don't even discuss the issue in the text. They just said, "The police were just there because a, a problem was happening near our campus." And parents want to know if their kids are okay, and kids want to know, and kids want to tell their parents if they are okay, too. Second of all, I'm in broadcasting class, and we need to share with social media. We need, we, for broadcasting class, we have to go to football games to film and record, and in that class, and then after of, after the, the games or anything that we have to film, we edit the videos and pictures we, we took in class, and we have to share them on social media. And, for example, we need to take inspiration from one like the football pages on Instagram, the volleyball, and we need to use our phone for that so we can know what is happening with our school activities with like, just games or sports clubs or anything that we need to film for our school. And we can't even use our phones during lunch, and this is, I really think is a huge problem because lunch is a time where we just relax and take our brain, just take our mind off of work for a bit, and just be with our friends, and just take a little break. And so I want to ask for more flexibility. And so, I want to ask for more flexibility on the cellphone ban. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yáñez.
And the last speaker signed up is for item number eight, F2, Mr. Ross Moore. And that concludes the speakers after Mr. Moore.
Board President Hanani, board members, interim superintendent Aguirre. My name is Ross Moore, President El Paso AFT. I'm confused. After the season of change we just went through, and all the talk about taking care of schools and let, in less well-to-do neighborhoods, this purchase is for Pete, for two of the well-to-do places, a Montessori school and Franklin High School. You could have stopped this and redirected that 1.8 million school dollars to schools that actually need it. I've gotten calls from members at, oh, just right off the top of my head, Hillside, who has an electrical system that is also failing, Lamar, same story, Sunrise Mountain, and from there, kids sweating, dripping off their face, and Guian, which has been a perennial problem as long as I can remember. The swamp coolers there, they're almost as old as I am, and they don't work. The teachers have been there a long time, have just gotten used to suffering and self, sweltering and silence. The new ones, they're calling out to the local. So I'm going to ask you to do, table this, canvass this, and figure out how to re-divert this money to schools that actually need it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
And I, I know that there was one speaker, I believe, that was not in attendance when I called her name, but she did show up, Ms. Solo, Jenny Solo.
I'm sorry, is this three minutes or one minute? Thank you. Good evening, board members and interim superintendent. My name is Jenny Solo. I'm here tonight not just as a parent or taxpayer, but as someone who's tired of watching this district reward failure while our children pay the price. Let's start with the basics. Three-year-old was left at wrong bus stop. Five-year-old was dropped off and alone and terrified. You call these isolated incidents, but we all know better. These are symptoms of a district that cut 27 bus drivers, 20 monitors, and dozens of support staff, and then acted shocked when children were left behind. Now, let's talk about the numbers, since that's what this board seems to care most about. The superintendent, the interim superintendent is making $1,325 a day, nearly $300,000 a year, while classrooms go without aids, teachers beg for supplies, and families get form letters instead of answers. Her contract, it was hidden for two months. It was literally disclosed last night, widely posted after pressure from the teachers' union. That's not transparency, that's damage control. You also paid out $695,000 in severance to the last superintendent to just walk away without cause. That's over a million dollars in leadership costs before Labor Day, and not a single measurable improvement for our students. Meanwhile, you open, reopen Lamar Elementary at a cost of 7.2 million, while other campuses crumble, crowd, crowded classrooms, and they wait for working laptops. You cut down CTE programs, and now there's no high school programs that they can actually work on. For the record, the superintendent, interim superintendent, wasn't dropped into this mess, she helped design it. As CFO, she helped plan those closures and the cuts, and now somehow she's failed upwards into the top job. What exactly are we rewarding here? Silence, loyalty, familiarity? Because it's not results, it's not safety, and it's certainly not student success. So what I'm asking is for reinstating critical support staff immediately, bus monitors, aides, bilingual liaisons, release a full breakdown of Lamar's true operating costs, make all contracts, including legal fees, fully accessible and public, give this community a timeline for a permanent qualified superintendent. We delete, we deserve leadership that's chosen for competence, not convenience, and because at the end of the day, our kids aren't falling behind, they're being left behind, literally. And we will not be silent until it happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Solo.
And that concludes, that concludes all the open forum speakers and all the speakers on certain agenda items.
If we could have administration move forward with the public meeting presentation, please.
Board President Hanani, trustees, this evening, we will be presenting to you the adoption of the official tax rate for the 2025, 2026 fiscal year, and Mr. Walt Byers will be introducing, providing an overview of the presentation.
Good evening, Board President Hanani, interim superintendent Aguirre, and board members. This is the district's presentation for the 2025 tax rate adoption. We're going to be adopting two tax rates, the MNO, maintenance and operations rate, and the interest and sinking INS rate. When we adopted tax rates, we're using the 2025 property values, and so it's a tax year 2025, and we're adopting a tax rate to fund the fiscal year 2025, 2526 operating budget, and we're also adopting a tax rate to fund the calendar year 2026 bonded, bonded debt payments. So the, the maintenance and operations rate is set by TEA, and it's based on property value growth and the number of enrichment pennies that have previously been approved by voters in the district. This, last year, we had a decrease in property values of 1.06% due to the homestead exemption, and we'll go into that on the next slide. But, so TEA sets the tier-one rate, and it's also called MCR, the maximum compressed rate, and that's at 63.16 cents. And then we've already have the 13 cents that we can add to that, and so our MNO tax rate is .7699, which is the same as last year. Here's a history of our, of our property values, like, these are the controller values. And you can see this, this last year, they went down a little bit, that's the 1.6%, and that's because of the homestead exemption increasing from 100,000 to 140,000. If that had not occurred, then the increase would only have been 4.43%. There would have been an increase of 4.3%. This is a historical MNO rates, so this is the seventh year of tax compression that started in 2019, and so we decreased six years in a row, and then finally, this year, we're at the same rate. The other rate we're setting is the INS tax rate, and we set a rate which is sufficient to fund the bonded debt payments for the follow, for that year, for calendar year 26. And so our bonded debt payments are $53,856,000, but also, we want to defees some debt because there's an opportunity for, for some good savings by doing that defeasement. So by adding $12 million, we'll go into that on the next page, we could set a tax rate and it'll, it'll fund the, the debt payments and the defeasement. We have an item and consent agenda for the defeasement, which you can go into later if you have any questions about. Also, I want to mention that the defeasement is $12 million from the tax rate, but we could also possibly defease up to $15 million. The $12 million defeasement has savings of $9.7 million, and the $15 million defeasement has savings of $12 million. So these are revenues and expenses for the INS fund. That's the debt payments, the same debt payments we just mentioned, and the defeasement, total 65 million point eight, 65.8 million. We also expect to get $10,288 from the state revenue, so our tax, our taxes have to support a total of $55,567,000. And we can do that at the tax rate of 3108, which is the same tax rate we currently have. This is a historical INS tax rates, so the 3108 is the highest we've been ever since our bond election back in 2016. In 2016, we communicated to the voters that we would go up to, the most we would go up to was 35.3 cents, and so this 3108 is the most we went up, and it shouldn't go up above These are just INS rates of the nine ISDs in El Paso County, and the top rate is your, is the total tax rate, the middle is the MNO, and the bottom is INS rate for each district. So this is our proposed, our proposed tax rates for 2025. .7699 MNO rate, .3108 INS rate, a total tax rate of 10807, same as last year. Then it just, we just wanted to mention something about the, the homestead exemption. This is the effect of the homestead exemption on an average value home last year and an average value home this year. So that $40,000 decreases the taxable amount that the taxpayer needs to pay. So in '24, the homes, the average value minus 100,000 times the tax rate was 1,0703, and this year, average value minus 140 is 1,279, and so it's a savings of $424 due to the increased homestead exemption. In your backup material, there's a worksheet that, that we have to do, and it's, it's called a 2025 tax rate calculation worksheet, and these numbers are calculated in there. So we calculate a no-new-revenue tax rate, and which for us was 9.9537 cents, and a voter approval tax rate, which is 1.0875. And our proposed rate is less than that, there is a problem if we can't go above that voter-approved tax rate. And then, this is the, the required language for the motion for the tax rate. And if you have any questions?
Are there any questions from any trustees? Trustee Sutton?
Hi, yes, thank you so much for the presentation. I did have a couple of questions. It was about the homestead exemption, exemption. My understanding is that it's, has to be voted on in November, or is that?
Yes, it still needs to be voted on.
And it, but it's likely going to pass?
It's likely to pass, and the state has told, told all the districts to go, go ahead, as assumed that it's going to pass.
Okay, so it sees whenever, when, if it passes, and then it goes into effect, so then that decreases the taxable amount, and then does that turn around and then affect the district's income?
It's, it does, but the state, it's supposed to be made up with state revenue.
So, that's my next question. So then if the state is supposed to, I guess, match that, or, you know, fill in the gaps, how do we hold them accountable for that? Is that something that is, we get no matter what, or do we have to like, you know, stay on them about it? Is it something that is consistent, or?
Well, there, actually, there's nothing we can do, we can't, we can't make them pay us more, but, but it'll be there, there'll be money there from the state. We did adopt, you know, budgets for, for taxes and for state revenue, and the way the, we adopted, adopted them before we got the certified values. So now that we have the certified values, we can do a budget amendment to adjust both of them, and, and we'll adjust them up, one up and one down.
All right, that's it, thanks.
Any other questions by board members?
Yes, yeah.
Trustee Quair?
Mr. Byers, thank you so much again for the presentation. I know that, I think, most of us met with you and Ms. Aguirre prior, too, so we get a, you know, more in-depth understanding, and that gives us a chance to kind of give that Q and A, right? But at least for the, you know, members of the public, I just want to make sure, so on, if you want to go to the, your PowerPoint slides?
Mm-hmm.
And I think where it talks about fiscal year 2526 and that 2026 debt defeasance?
Yes.
In as layman's terms as possible, what does that mean, Mr. Byers?
It's, it's a partial debt defeasance, and so we have, the issue we're going to defease, actually, I've got the presentation. And we do have people in the audience, we have our financial advisors here who can help us. But the defeasance is a partial cash defeasance of the 2017 bonds, and for instance, if we pay down, what we do is, we pay down a portion of the principal, and it's in the future, and then we're able to start earning savings on the annual interest that we pay. Like, for instance, on the $15 million cash defeasance, we would have annual interest savings of $732,000. And then by the time the defeasance is made, we've saved, we've had present value savings of over $12 million.
Well, if, if someone were to come to us and say, hey, that $12 million, we can use it for HVAC, we can use it for safety and security, can, can we do that with that money?
No, we can't.
Why not?
Because the INS rate is designated only for the payment of bonded debt.
And this $12 million defeasance, that's basically, just in a nutshell, that's decreasing our debt as to what we owe?
It is decreasing our debt, yes.
All right.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Byers, that's all I have.
Trustee Beal?
Yeah, could I please see the last slide that you had on your presentation, please?
This one?
Yeah, right, well, when that said the 13 pers, 13.32% increase in the tax rate for maintenance and operation, okay. Okay, I just needed to see that for my notes, thank you so much.
Okay, okay. The way that's calculated is, see that 9.3, the .937, that's the no, no new revenue tax rate, and the effective rate is the, the increase from that .9537 to the 10807, and that's 13.32%.
Okay, perfect, thank you so much.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Trustee Leverage?
Oh, sorry, Mr. Byers, just one quick one. Again, in the spirit of trustee Quair just asking questions for public understanding as well, what are some of the benefits of retiring debt? I know the answer, just asking you, can we, what, how does that affect us?
Well, one thing, it, it opens up the capacity in, in the fund, so when we do have a bond election, there's more capacity, meaning we could issue more bonds in the future, and it does reduce the payment in the future.
I was, I was about to add that, and having lower debt would, would relieve the district of having to pay higher levels of interest in future years as well as maintaining our debt payment at a lower rate.
So this is all good for our financial longevity, let's say?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I do have, I do have a quick question, too. Can you go back to that last slide again where it talks about the, the language? Can you just kind of talk about that 95 cents to 108 cents and how the homestead exemption affects the calculation?
So, yeah, so I ran some numbers, and it does, you know, it, let's see. It's right here. You know, so it, it makes it seem like our values went way up for that to be occurring, but they didn't go way up, and it's because of the loss in exemption in the current year, which is 2.7 billion dol, 2.7 billion dollars. So that 2.7 is what makes that happen, the loss in the exemption from last year to this year.
Thank you, and that's so important because I think, you know, the, the language as presented is that we're actually increasing 13%, but our revenues, based on what's being collected, is actually lower than last year.
Right, right.
So that's a very important distinction, and-
So that's a very important distinction and it's, I think, sometimes it can be difficult to explain based on what the language is. The other thing is that, to my understanding, this is going to be the first year that the school district will not be the highest portion of taxpayers' bill. Could you talk that through a little bit for the public as well?
Right. Right, in the, in the past, the school district always was the highest. But then with all the things that the state's been doing, so they increased the homestead exemption from 25,000 to 40,000 to 100,000, and now 140. And then they've also compressed the tax rates. So if you look at our tax rate versus the other entities over the last, you know, six, seven years, they have gone up and, and we've gone down as a portion of the total tax bill. And now I'm sure the city is the highest, the highest portion.
It's important to note that the, the homestead exemptions that districts are required to apply to the property valuations are not applicable to the other taxing entities in, in our community. And so it only applies to school districts at $140,000 exemption.
Thank you so much, I think that clarifies things.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, thanks. At this time, we will move to the public forum part of the public meeting. Anybody in the audience is welcome to come and speak, up to three minutes at a time. Are there any speakers to this item?
Board President Hanani, board members, interim superintendent Aguirre. My name is Ross Moore, president of El Paso AFT. Money's tight, isn't it? Okay. Here's the number on your proposed notice that caught my eye. That's how much you owe on bond debt just on principal alone, that doesn't count interest. Okay? So that 1.8 million that went to those two schools for their AC, you're not going to have a lot of money, may not get a bond, that's why you should cancel that item. Be frugal, be physically responsible, and put that money towards schools that are in much deeper need. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional public speakers to this item? Barring none? Oh, one, oh. You'll have three minutes?
Okay, good evening, Board of Trustees and Superintendent. Let's not pretend the tax rate slide tells this whole story. Yes, the proposed tax rate stays flat at 1.0807 per $100 valuation. What your second slide confirms and what too many district tributary is that effectively it's a 13.3, 32 tax increase. Now, whether the state takes it off or not, that's the state. That doesn't mean that you guys voted for it. So I want to make that clear. Because of rising property values, the average home value jumped from 257,000 to 258,000, give or take. Even with the increased homestead exemption, they are collecting more per homeowner, barring the fact that the state's trying to lower it. So when you say there's no change in the tax rate, what you mean is there's no political risk on paper, but yes, El Pasoans are paying more. If you already call this a 13% increase while claiming no tax change, how can we trust any more bond promises? You're showing us an INS rate of 0.3108, the debt side, and saying that it's staying flat, but when bonds come up again, will you admit that the new debt would mean a little more long-term? You just literally said when, not if. Show the full tax import, impact with rising appraisals, clearly state what gets cut if bonds don't pass, because right now, families are paying more while getting less. Fewer aides, less transparency, and more administrative bloat. We're watching, and if you want our voters to trust you with bonds in the future, you need to be honest with the real taxpayers, show restraint in spending, especially for administration. Prove the district, district knows how to prioritize students before politics, not anti-education. We are pro accountability, and we won't be manipulated with charts and fine print when it's time to pay our tax bills. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public speakers to this item? No other public speakers, are there any additional questions from trustees as to the item? Thank you. This item will have to be taken with a vote by roll call. Would anyone like to make a motion? I'll make that motion. I move that the Board of Trustees adopt the resolution adopting a tax rate for the tax year 2025 at a total tax rate of $1.807, 0807, 1.0807, which consists of .7699 dollars for maintenance and operations, which is the MNO, and .3108 dollars for interest and sinking, which is the INS for the tax year 2025 as presented. Can I have a second?
Trustee Hanani, could I ask a question, please, on the motion? I believe Mr. Byers, in his presentation, had a different motion that is what, what you just read.
Can you put that back?
Could we put it back up on the screen, please?
It's here, but I don't know, there it is.
I move that the Board of Trustees approve the resolution that adopts a property tax rate of $1.0807, which is effectively a 13.32% increase in the tax rate. The rate consists of .7699 dollars for maintenance and operations and .3108 dollars for interest and sinking for the 2025 tax year as presented. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second. Trustee Beals?
What?
No. Trustee Quayre?
Yes.
A yes from me, trustee Leverage?
Yes.
Trustee Osterland?
Yes.
Trustee Sutton?
Yes. Can, can we just get clarity, because we're hearing a different number over here on the percentage increase? Could you make sure that we read that correctly?
13.32%.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I, I think people over here heard 15?
No.
And so we're just making sure, thank you very much.
13.32%. That motion carries with trustee Beals voting nay, and trustee Quayre, trustee Hanani, trustee Leverage, trustee Osterland, and trustee Sutton voting yea. Thank you, Sessi, for that clarification. That will take us to item number eight, which is the consent agenda. Item eight A3 contains a minor revision on the date of the meeting. And item eight E4 is being withdrawn by the administration. Additional, in addition to that, are there any other items that trustees would like to pull from consent?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry, go ahead.
Trustee Sutton?
Yes, I'd like to pull consent agenda item F2. F2, and let me just read it out so I make sure that we're looking at the right one. F2 is the approval to award the SEC O'Coolchiller Project CL425, is that correct? Yes.
Okay. We will be pulling F2 from consent. Trustee Quayre?
I'd like to pull B1.
B1, that is the adoption of proposed revisions to board policy FNCE, student conduct, personal communication devices?
Correct, yes.
In addition to that, I would like to pull... D3.
President Hanani?
Trustee Leverage?
Would you be able to repeat the items that have been pulled by the, by the administration today?
Item E4 is being withdrawn.
Move, I should say.
Yes, E4. That's the only one. Would you like to pull something? Okay. I'll give you a few more seconds. The Chillers, the class size waivers, and the cell phone policy are all being pulled.
All good.
Okay, sounds good. Let's go ahead and move to approve that consent. I move that the consent agenda items be approved as listed, including all recommended vendors for all amounts indicated. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries 6-0. Let's move on now to item B1, adoption of proposed revisions to board policy FNCE local, student conduct, personal communication devices, electronic devices.
Good evening, Board President Hanani, trustees, and interim superintendent Ms. Aguirre. My name is Mark Bosse, Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Schools, and I've had the pleasure to help revise our electronic communication device policy FNCE local. I'm here to answer any of your questions you may have. If you prefer to see a PowerPoint that kind of addresses how this was outlined over the last few weeks or month, I'm welcome to share that as well, whatever you prefer.
I'll defer to trustee Quayre since he pulled this item.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bosse. What's, what's easier for you, sir?
Probably just to answer your questions, yes.
Okay, great, okay. So after hearing from, from public forum, talking to other principals throughout the district, it seems like the, one of the biggest concerns, and I, you know, me reading through the statute, I know that it states school day, right? Might not state during instruction time, non-instruction time, but I also know that, you know, we also want to make it as convenient as possible, right? But we also want to make sure we abide by the spirit of the law. In, in me going over it, I know that there is a provision in there, in the statute, and just for the record, just to put it out there, a lot of the stuff that I'm going to be speaking about goes towards section C1 of the, of the section, and I believe that's section So necessary to comply with a health or safety requirement imposed by law or as part of the district's or school's safety protocols. I think the last thing that we want as, as parents, as school board members, you know, as, as representatives of our, of our responsive areas, is to have a bunch of kids at lunchtime trying to get to a sidewalk or something, right? To try to use their phone to contact their parents, their siblings, loved ones. I think that one student from El Paso High said, look, I'm in like 17 different organizations, right? Like, I just need to know one, who's going to pick me up, where I'm going, how I'm going to get there, and, and where my student, you know, activities are going to be meeting. And I know that this is probably putting Sessi on the hot spot over here, but in the sense of having some kind of room in the sense of safety and, and security in those protocols, I mean, I don't want a bunch of students on the sidewalk trying to contact their family members at lunchtime when they could be doing it somewhere else. And I think it's, it's, it's a little bit unfair where if you have an open campus and you have that student leaving the campus, right? And they have that means and availability to leave, now they're not being watched, right? Because they're, they're off-campus. Whereas if you have the kids that don't have the means to leave and are on-campus, now they're being watched and, you know, kind of told, no, you can't use your phone. I mean, I'm, I'm assuming you all discussed this, right? In looking at the different protocols, is there something that we can, you know, kind of strive to make amends with?
Yeah, it was discussed, and you're right, the, the way it was interpreted is the instructional school day, so it's the beginning bell to the last bell of the day, and that varies by the different campus level that you're at. I think the biggest issue is directly towards the high school, right? Because they're the ones who do have the off-campus lunch. And so the students who do leave have that privilege of getting on their phone, in their cars, walking to their house, using it, and have that opportunity. Those that don't have that privilege then do have to stay in the cafeteria or on the school grounds where it is not permitted. Again, that was, you know, in the dialogue we had with legal counsel, was that interpretation of what consists of the bell-to-bell instructional day. The way our calendars committee drafted bell-to-bell, it is the beginning to end. It does include transition and lunchtime, and that's why that was interpreted in that manner.
So as of right now, sorry, turn my mic on. As of right now, in terms of any child using their phone during lunchtime if they're on campus, it's going to be the same type of, I guess, disciplinary conduct in the sense of warnings and then kind of going above that?
It could be, yes, sir. At this time, yes.
Okay. I mean, that, it's definitely something that I would like to see if we could, I say the word workaround, right? I, I obviously want to comply with what we're supposed to be complying with, but in, in my opinion, and I don't know if other board members will agree, but I, I don't want kids left, you know, at school. I, I don't want any issues to where we're having to, you know, police a student to that regard where now it's causing a disservice to the student and especially the district when we have the means available to try to work around there. Especially if you have a section like section C, right? C1, where it, I mean, it's, it's worked in there for a reason, you know?
Absolutely.
But, you know, I, I, this is just a comment from, from me, you know, I would ask our, our parents, our staff, our faculty to just be a little bit lenient with us in the sense that this is something that we have never done before, right? So it, it's going to take some fine tuning, it's going to take some, I think, going back and forth, but I just wanted to, to put that out there.
Yes, and I will share that in our, in our messaging with parents, it's going to go out after approval. We do have designated safe spaces for use, the nurse's office, obviously, the administrative office. So for the young lady who said she did not get the right opportunity to talk to her parents, she could take that phone to the office and say, I need to notify my parents that I'm getting picked up, who's my ride? You have those designated safe spaces, counseling center is another one, because there are opportunities, or there are moments where you do have to use them, especially when we're in our protocols. There are opportunities for administration to create the, the need to address parents in a lockdown. Of course, it has to be on silent, cannot be, you know, can't be a phone call, it has to be a text just to say, Mom, I'm safe. We do have those things within our, within our parameters to be able to do so that parents feel safe and comfortable with this process. We do know that this is a challenge, and lunch has been our one largest obstacle. And so we are working with our principals and our teachers to use this as a teaching moment, not to start confiscating immediately, but to say, hey, this is the rule, let's follow the rule, let's be strategic. We're trying not to be so heavy-handed early on, especially since you guys haven't actually adopted this policy. Our current policy is still in play until it's been approved by the board. But once, once adopted, we will be doing professional development via video posting, so all teachers, staff, and families will see the same video, which is a presentation by myself that we'll be doing in the next two days, so that it gets out before the, at the beginning of next week, so everyone has that same clear message. You're welcome.
Are there any other questions by any other trustees? Yes, trustee Beals?
Sorry, I had very similar questions as Mr. Quayre, and they were answered. I think that we all, well, as parents and students, this is all new for all of us, right? And I have already gotten a call second week, you know, before the adoption of the policy about smartwatches and stuff. But I do think that if adopted, or if or when adopted, about how long do you think the turnaround will be to get that video out for parents and teachers or?
We're filming tomorrow.
Okay.
So hopefully it's available by, for teachers and staff by Monday at the latest, because we have to put it into our EPSD University website, so they log in, and it shows that they participated. It's in their platform and their, and their virtual spot for viewing. And then as soon as faculty and staff get the training, then we'll publish it for the community to see as well.
The community, okay, yeah. And there's a few things I would like to know about, like, what would a situation look like, for instance, like for students who have student council and, or sports and stuff?
Right.
Is there going to be a little leeway? And I know the law says, you know, kids with an IEP or 504 program can get an exemption with a doctor's letter?
Correct.
Practicing doctor in the state of Texas. So is there going to be a little bit of leeway for students who are in programs like that?
Yes, ma'am. So in our, in our training, you'll see that UIL and off-campus related activities as they prepare for them is kind of that exemption as well. We know a lot of students are participating in academic, academic programs, athletic programs, and there's that transition from classroom now to that event. And as long as they're monitored and supervised by the coach or the, or the director, that does give them the leeway because they're preparing for that off-campus UIL event or that UIL event. And so sometimes you do need to have access to your phone to let the parents know, I forgot my jersey. Hey, you're bringing the nachos to the game, Mom, don't forget. We know that that exists, and so you can't, you have to have it under supervision, but those are the exemptions. We have worked through what the young lady was talking about at the student council meeting, I believe they were kind of logging in to show that they were in attendance. What we've been working with our student activities managers to utilize Schoology, so you can actually have a student activities page. They'll log in anytime throughout the day because it's an instructional platform, and that they can get information from there, they can ask the questions in there, they can log in for their events in there. So we're learning how to pivot to a device-free learning environment, but where they're using the district device environment. So I'm happy that we're going to be sharing that with our student, student activities managers on Monday, as some of ours have kind of gone through that process and tweaked it. So we have workarounds. Obviously, once school ends, then they have access Obviously, once school ends, then they have access to their phones as soon as the bell rings, and so a lot of students that are after-school programs can use it at that point. But we do know that the UIL exemption is going to be an important one because of so many kids involved in so many activities, sports included. The young man that needed his phone to film a games can film a games, just the workaround will be like, "When do you upload it into your device?" So you have to upload it at home or before school starts, so it's in your laptop and you can do your edits.
Okay.
You can log in through social media through there with supervision from the teacher if it's instructionally based.
Okay, awesome. It sounds like you guys are on it, and you guys are putting in a lot of work and thinking about every little detail to go into, you know, into this. I know that I've been, I've had a lot of concerns, obviously, and as a parent, and but, and I'm sure you guys have thought about the lunch thing. I know Mr. Quayre brought that up, and how, what it's going to look like financially when a lot of our high school students are going off-campus, and how is that going to affect us financially with the lunch program, et cetera, et cetera, safety and all of that stuff? So I'm looking forward to seeing what you guys come up with, and I guess good luck to all of us with this new law.
Absolutely.
It's going to be a learning curve.
So I know you guys get the phone calls from all the parents and, you know, those that are concerned. On the positive side is that you do see a lot more student engagement in the classrooms. We're in the buildings, we're watching in the classrooms, the engagements increased at lunchtime, even because they can't talk, on being on their phones, they're actually talking to each other. You see whites in their eyes in the hallways, they're interacting with adults. There is that really positive change that we don't hear about, but we see it on a day-to-day basis, so it's actually been pretty neat to see.
Well, thank you so much for all your hard work, and thank you for the presentation and clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, trustee Beals. Just a couple of quick things. I know the challenge is going to be just sustainable implementation. I would just ask that you continue to provide us a pulse of what challenges students are experiencing, and also teachers. I anticipate that there's going to be a lot of questions about how do we confiscate a device when we get to that point, and so if we could just, obviously, you cannot necessarily anticipate every single concern that's going to come through, but if you're, we're trying to constantly provide that solution, you know, all the way from here down to the student, I think, just having, continuing to have a pulse on the everyday challenges that they're experiencing will help us if we need to pivot and, you know, make changes to trustee Quayre's point. The other thing, too, just like trustee Beal said, I think parents are looking for clear communication. Reading a policy isn't necessarily clear, the clearest way, so just, you know, providing the avenues or the mechanisms for how they would get an exemption, what that would look like, how they can retrieve the device, you know, what contact would look like, and so just trying to be as clear as possible as we kind of navigate this. And I am looking forward to seeing the positive things on the other side as well. So are there any additional? Yeah, trustee Sutton.
Hi, Mr. Bosse, thank you for being here. Do the teachers have landlines in their classrooms?
Not all classes do, but there, we've been working towards having a landline in every classroom for probably the last three years, we're not quite there yet, but I would say a majority of ours do, but we're not 100% there.
Well, because I know we talked, we had that discussion at a meeting that that was supposed to happen. Would it be, has there been discussion about maybe like with the student that spoke where her mom, there was confusion about who was picking her up? Would it be possible for parents to call the landline and speak to teachers and/or students using that phone?
They can, they can't call the classroom directly, they'll call the front office, the front office will message it to the teacher.
Okay.
Here comes the landline response.
I know that the plan was that every classroom would have one.
That is the goal.
So I think something that I discussed before with, well, with interim superintendent, I get it, was two things for me here is, I don't, I haven't experienced this yet, well, I did a little bit with my 25-year-old, but when it comes to parents wanting to know, wanting to keep tabs on their kids, I understand that. My concern comes for the teachers, because I, the thing that I've said before is, this is a state law. Most laws, you have to, most laws are, you're held accountable by a fine or going to jail. That's not the case here. And so when it says law, we have to abide by the law, but then what are the consequences, right? So I'm afraid that the teachers will be becoming police, which is not what they should be doing. So I'm hoping that teachers will, if, I know we've talked about maybe having a survey or something that you, your department can do, we can get feedback from teachers on how this is going in admin, because it's a kind of a slippery slope, you know, when phones have to be put away or whatever. So I would hope that that's going to, I hope for the sake of the teachers that it's smooth and there's not a lot of disruption to instruction when it comes to our policy.
Yes, one of the things we're going to track is through Student Parent Services, we actually have a referral code that's specific to communication devices, pager and cell phone devices, the code 64, I believe. One of the things that that will tell us is if we are having, you know, teachers really police, and we're just seeing a huge number of referrals because of it. So we'll be looking at that every three weeks to kind of gain a pulse on where we're at. So once it's approved, I'll know in a three-week timeframe if we have this huge jump in referrals because of the cell phone. So I can provide that as a board memo, a board update for you guys, and we'll do it at the six-weeks mark, so we can see that trend. Right now, the report is that because it's law, students aren't really fighting us too much, and they're not challenging as much as we thought. I know when we're on campuses and we do see a student as they're walking in, we'll give the reminder, "Hey, put it away, I don't want you to lose it." They're like, "Oh, yeah, sorry." So the kids have been really cordial and understand that because it's law, it's a little bit different than just a policy. So, but we will keep you updated on the data to see if that is trending in the wrong direction. At the end of the day, yes, we don't want, we want teachers teaching. The whole point of the bill is that you can teach, so the students are engaged, that you're having to really invest in your profession and not policing cell phones, so that's the last thing we want.
Thank you, trustee Sutton. And in that vein, could you get, I'm sorry, no, 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 no. Could we get an update about the number of classrooms that still need that phone installation and what the timeline for that is?
Yes, so the telecom project upgrade will equip every classroom with a phone. Now, the phone that we already been presented is going to have a panic button that if they depress, they don't have to pick up their handset, and now it will send a signal right away for a 911.
How many of those, what's the timeline for the completion of that installation?
So the order has been ordered. We are having a kickoff meeting here in the next week, and we look at maybe three to four months before we complete the project.
Because I think the last time we were here, the timeline, I think, was, it was October is what we were told, so could we get maybe a monthly board update about how that is going? I mean, I think that is also a concern, is we want to make sure that there's accessibility for teachers in each classroom, and I would assume that teachers would have access to their cell phones in the absence of a classroom phone.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Yes.
Trustee Beals?
The law, I mean, from what I understand, says that students must turn off devices during instructional time. Lunch isn't instructional time, so would that mean that during lunch, there would be no penalties because it's not considered instructional time?
No, unfortunately, lunch is considered instructional time as it's transitioned. It's the first bell to the very last bell of the day is all instructional time. That's why lunch is part of the prohibition.
Interesting, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that the way the law reads?
Yeah, the policy reads school day.
Is that exactly what, that's what the law says?
Yeah, if I could be clear about that, the law gives you a choice. Either you prohibit them from coming onto campus, period, or you have it turned off during the school day. School day is not defined. Even in the TEA model policy, they actually call it the same way that EPISD is doing it, which is from bell to bell. There is no exception in the law for lunch, it just says school day. So it's either an outright complete prohibition from bringing it on the property, or it is designating, excuse me, a method of storage during the school day. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you. I just, I just have seen other districts here in El Paso who have already implemented their policies, and they all have similar but slightly different with a little bit more leeway, and so that's why I brought it up, because I know, because of that. And so we're probably one of the last ones that have come up with a policy. For example, it's a Northeast ISD who, you know, their policy looks just a little bit different, and there's that little bit of leeway when it comes to lunch and, you know, lunch not being an instructional time, and so what that may look like if we did something similar?
Right, so the law doesn't talk about instructional time, it just says school day.
Okay.
And I understand that there are some districts that are adopting different policies. The policy that EPISD is being presented to the board is largely based off the TEA model policy that they drafted, that they were charged to draft by the legislature to put one out, and largely EPISD is following that. It is hard to say what will happen to a district if they allow for use of a cell phone during lunch. The statute itself, as it's modified, doesn't really say what the consequences are for the school district, and so that remains to be seen. And I don't know how TEA would police it either in that regard, I can't predict that. It's a new law that I think all school districts are going to struggle with until there's some clarity.
Okay, so we're playing it safe for now, and then how often would you, when, how often can policies change? Is it every year that we can go back and look into it and maybe change some things if we see that some things are working for some districts, some aren't? It's kind of like, I am a parent, right, and so I have to kind of pick and choose my battles, right? And so it's like, do I really want to nitpick this lunchtime and really, you know? I can go so many ways when it comes to this. I understand that we're trying to play it safe, and it's so new for all of us. I'm just trying to figure out in my head what is fair and what isn't when it comes to students that are in programs, students that are in football, recording, parents who have children on 504 plans, IEPs, having to go out of their way and go get doctors, you know, letters, which I understand. And so it seems like there is some kind of leeway, but if you don't, you're not in the program, and if you don't have an IEP, then you will get in trouble for, you know, using your downtime at lunch to, you know, make that important text message. You know, it's not like they're interrupting classrooms, you know, classroom time or anything like that. So I'm just, I think as a parent, I'm just kind of seeing as like, we, there's just so much leeway there, and so I just feel like we're just kind of being extra, you know, picky or extra stern about this law.
If I may, Ms. Collins, I think we're actually the first board to adopt a policy in the region, just because this, our regular board meeting happened to be first on the calendar, is that, is that right? I haven't seen it adopted by any other board yet.
You know, I'm not sure that their boards have adopted. I know that I've seen communications that were put out from different school districts, but I'm not aware of when their board meetings were, if they took it up, to be honest.
Because I think Socorro has not yet, I don't believe Isleta has either. I think their meeting is on Wednesday, Socorro's maybe tomorrow, Gato Dios, it hasn't happened yet. So maybe one way that we can, maybe something that could help is that we could provide a board update on what the other school districts have adopted once they've done that. Maybe by the end of the month, everybody should have something in place. I'm looking at Socorro's right now, and it looks like they also don't allow it during lunch, so I'm thinking that there may be some changes to the original communication. Would that be helpful to you if we had like an update like that?
Yes, that answered my question, definitely. I was just, my main question was how off, like, how soon can we go back and make changes to the policy if we needed or wanted to?
Okay, so let's just get a board update that evaluates what the other school districts have actually adopted once they've done that, and I think that may, you know, help us, help us out.
Oh, super, yeah, awesome, great, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Beals. Are there any other questions? Okay, who would like to make a motion on this one?
I'll take it.
Okay, trustee Quayre?
Sure, okay. I move that the board adopt the proposed revisions to board policy FNCE Local, student conduct, personal communication devices, electronic devices as presented.
Is there, that is a motion by trustee Quayre, is there a second? Second, second by trustee Sutton, who beat trustee Osterland out, sorry about that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries 6-0. We will move on to item D3, and this is the approval of submission of annual maximum class size exception waivers for the 2025-2026 school year to the Texas Education Agency. I pull this because I'd like the interim superintendent to give an update to the public on what has changed from last year to June, and from last year to this year, and from June to this year. I know that's a lot, but I want there to be a distinction about what class size waivers were submitted for last year, what we were anticipating in June when we adopted the budget, and how that's changed to now.
And Ms. Macias, chief, will be providing you of that update.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Hinadi, Ms. Aguirre, members of the board, as of our class size waivers, truly the only difference to the percentage that we currently have is for fifth grade. Last year, what we approved was for pre-K3, we had a 1 to 22 class size ratio, an emergency add at 23. For pre-K4 through fifth grade, we had a 1 to 24 ratio with an emergency add at 25. So for this year, for 25-26, the only difference to that is fifth grade is 1 to 25 and an emergency add at 26. So last year at this time, the first submission, whenever you all give us this approval, we submit the class size waivers at the end of the month, 30 days after school starts. So the first submission, we submitted 44 waivers. This year, with this ratio that we have, we're anticipating possibly 50 waivers being submitted, but yet that was as of Friday. We did, we did a leveling, and that's right now what we're looking at, approximately 50. So you might add, okay, there is a change in that fifth grade, what does that look like? Right now, currently, we have two classes that are at 25. Other than that, everything else is pretty much the same from last year. I don't know if there's any other, oh, the other thing I wanted to share is that for our littles, for pre-K3 and pre-K4, really, even though I say it's a 1 to 22 for pre-K3, we actually have a teacher and a para, so it's actually two adults to 22 children. And for pre-K4, we have the same, we have a teacher and a para, so it's 2 to 24.
And I'd also add that in June, as we were finalizing our budget, we had proposed and discussed with the board the consideration of doing emergency adds at a higher level than that 25 trigger mark. But as through the summer, as we evaluated our staffing and actually looked at our class loads, we felt that the budgetary impact that we initially anticipated in savings was not, it was, in other words, we're breaking even by keeping them at that same 25 level emergency add. And so that is why we're presenting to you basically the same proposal we, or the same standard that we had in fiscal year 24-25.
So essentially, we abandoned the initial proposal from June. We're reverting back to what we did last year, except that we have that one additional student in fifth grade level, but so far, no exemptions are being filed for that?
We currently have two. So as of Friday, we will have 50 waivers that we would submit if we would have submitted them on Friday. However, we still have till the end of this month. Usually, we submit our waivers monthly, and you all receive a board update every month to see the waivers. So last year for 24-25, total number of waivers for the year was 81, and we started off with a total of 44 that we submitted the first time. So right now, we're anticipating to be very close to that, anywhere between 81 to 90 for the entire school year.
And then the other change that we're seeing from last fiscal year to this fiscal year is the addition, the automatic addition of the para for pre-K3.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, so that's to help teachers with
Okay, so that's to help teachers with the littles, and it's automatic, they don't need to wait until they get to ten.
That's correct. And in the past, we were staffing the paraprofessional once the, the classroom had more than ten students. And, and we have, we've moved away from that and just automatically added that paraprofessional.
And just sort of as we forecast needs for forthcoming years, you know, one thing that I see sort of happening over and over is certain campuses typically get the higher class loads, possibly because we don't have a transfer in policy, we sort of allow all transfers to transfer in. It may be prudent to look at whether a cap on transfers would help alleviate these overcrowded campuses. I know that's a policy that is typically used in other districts to alleviate overcrowding in certain campuses. It certainly could help balance out our campuses, help with some of the issues that our teachers and our students and our parents are experiences, experiencing at very overcrowded campuses, and also, you know, I think help those smaller schools to have that infusion of students as well. So maybe just for the, for the future conversation, but thank you, that explains quite a bit. And are there any questions? Yes, trustee Sutton.
Hi, just a couple of questions, I guess, I guess about history, maybe. How many years has EPISD applied for waivers? Do you know?
I don't know exactly how long. I've been here for three years, and every year we have applied for waivers. My understanding is that the board at the time had said waivers are okay as long as at maximum twenty-four, and at twenty-five is an emergency add. So that was something that I heard, I don't know exactly when that was put in place, but that's something that we put, that we followed as of three years ago.
Okay. And I don't know if you can answer this, I actually asked Commissioner Mike Marath this, didn't really get the answer I wanted, but why is this allowed? Why are waivers allowed? Why aren't we capping at twenty-two?
Yes, there's exceptions. Again, in TEA, they know that every district is unique, and they have certain, certain reasons for doing waivers. So for example, on our side, and I put it in here, so I'm going to try to find it really quick, but I believe there's, and I have my brainiac behind me, is there four exemptions that we submit for? For the waiver, there's four reasons that we could submit the waiver? Okay, so what I could do is I could get you those exemptions, but one of the exemptions is, for example, if you don't have enough force, if you don't have enough teachers, so therefore, a district might need to have a larger size. The other one is, for example, if you have, if you have, and she's looking. Budget necessities, which many districts within Texas are doing that, other school districts within this region are also using that as a reason, and that's the reason that we use. Twenty-two to one is the given, I guess, class size recommendation from TEA. However, there are, and she's looking for them, the four. I'll submit them, I'll share them with you.
I'm, I'm aware of the exemptions, it's fine.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, that was a good question.
I thought maybe the public and/or teachers might want to know if they didn't already know. The, the, I will say the law is not, well, sorry, on TEA, it's not that clear, it goes back and forth. Did you say also that when you apply for waivers, do you all let the board know, or is that, is that kept within the staff?
Yes, what we do is by approving this recommendation today, you give us the opportunity, anytime any class goes above the twenty-two between pre-K and fourth grade, we submit them on a monthly basis. So that's the, that is what you're approving today, and I found the four reasons. So reason number one, of lack in capacity to add a section at a campus, so that's a waiver. Best for students to stay in their current section rather than open a new section. We do have, we have some classes or some campuses that request that because they'd rather have those children with that teacher. And based on the feedback, anytime we have any students above twenty-two, there is a letter that goes out to parents. So oftentimes, it's working with the community, and they'd rather have, let's say, twenty-three or twenty-four students in that classroom before we add anybody, or, or twenty-five. The third reason is balanced class loads is feasible. If the balance of class loads is feasible, oftentimes, for example, we might have three classes with twenty-three students, or twenty-three, twenty-three, and twenty-two students. That's something that those campuses prefer. So therefore, instead of adding another teacher at, for example, if we're talking about pre-K three, they would rather keep those sections versus adding another one. And the last one is threshold is twenty-five is reached, and the process for emergency add begins. So those are the different things that we have in place, and that's some of the reasons that we recommend to TA if we want to submit a waiver.
Okay.
Thank you for allowing me the time to find it.
Yes, thank you for sharing that. I just do want to make a statement that I'm very happy about our pre-K three and pre, well, pre-K four has stayed the same, but definitely pre-K three with our para, imagine twenty-two, three-year-olds, I've done that before, it's fun. I guess I hope one day, and I don't know if it'll ever happen, but maybe we can make it happen one day, that Kinder has paras as well, because it's really tough in Kinder as well. And it's not like there's a magic line of change when it gets to first grade, it just, it does get a little bit easier. So I'm, I appreciate this, the information, and I appreciate the work that's been done. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Sutton, are there any other questions?
Yes, please.
Trustee Beals?
First of all, I'd like to thank President Hanani for bringing up the open enrollment and a lot of our schools being overcrowded. I know, I would like to see if we could somehow maybe implement capping at a certain number or something for some of our schools that are just overcrowded, not enough locker rooms for students, and with cell phones having to stay in our personal bags, backpacks, et cetera, with there not being enough lockers, you know, it just creates an opportunity for vandalism. And I'm not just speaking from things that I've been hearing, but from experience personally. And, you know, it's just overcrowding schools, traffic vandalism, no, it just, it's creating so much tension in these schools. So I guess my, my ask is, is that something that we can look into figuring out how to, I guess, cap our numbers? When, since it's open enrollment, some schools are more popular than others, and just kind of having a little bit more organization when it comes to that.
We could definitely, I know that coming up, we are going to be doing our school attendance zone, our boundaries. So that is something that we could have the committee look at, because truly, whenever we're doing our, our attendance zone, we're looking at capacity at the campus and the number of students that reside and they actually attend the school. So that's some, a component that we could add and provide that feedback to the board. We're hoping that either November, December, we will have the process to make recommendations for you all, and that's something that we could put down as far as research and a recommendation for the board.
Great, thank you so much. And then one more thing that just popped into my head, when, when splitting classrooms, could we also look into, like, students who have 504s or IEPs and how often they're being moved? Could that be something that we could look into? For example, if someone has a 504 with, you know, anxiety or something, and they need more stability structure? I know that I have heard some situ, in some situations where some of these students are being moved from classroom to classroom three, four times in one year, and there's no structure or stability for these kids, and they're just being moved because principal says so, et cetera, et cetera. Is that something that we could look into as well when we are organizing or splitting these classrooms and seeing which students have those special needs that need to stay and have a little bit more stability? I knew, I know a lot of our children need that stability, right? And it's always hard to keep moving and getting used to a new teacher, et cetera, et cetera. But there are also some students who need a little bit more stability and time to adjust to new classrooms. So is that something that we can kind of put into so that when principals or anyone is moving the classrooms, that we could give those kids a little bit more stability?
That's a great recommendation. I know I have school leadership here. Whenever we do our staffing, I will mention that, and I know that we have all that information, especially at the campus level, that, that way they could take that into consideration before they recommend a child to split into another classroom, especially if it's part of their IEP.
Yes, that would be great, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
I would like to proceed with this motion, and with interim superintendent Ms. Aguita's blessing, I think that we're going to make a small amendment to the motion, and it's to go ahead and keep that class size ratio at fifth grade to, I guess, the twenty-five, rather than, since it's just two classrooms, you know, I want to make sure that we're going in the right, in the right direction. I think adding the para to pre-K three is a really great addition. So let's keep things going positively rather than having sort of this back and forth. I think that would show good faith effort on this board's part, so that's.
Can I give feedback?
Yes.
You don't have to include that in the, in the approval process, that's something that you could share with Ms. Aguita.
Okay.
This is truly to give administration the ability to submit the waiver. The ratios, it's, it was more for information for our board, so you all have all the information of how a waiver is actually submitted, but that is not required as long as Ms. Hanani, or, you know, you share that with Ms. Aguita. It does not have to be included, and Ms. Aguita will give us that directive to.
Perfect. I think that, I'm glad we were able to have that conversation out loud. I think just trending positively and showing our teachers that we, you know, understand their budgetary restrictions, but are compassionate and certainly understand the challenges that they're facing in the classrooms. So with that said, do we have a motion on this item after having that conversation? Trustee Quair?
So this is item D three. I move that the Board of Trustees approve the class size enrollment review process and required submission of maximum class size exceptions for the 2025-2026 school year for any pre-kindergarten through fourth grade classes that exceed the maximum limit of twenty-two students.
Is there a second?
Second, and thank you, Ms. Messias.
Thank you, Ms. Messias. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries six zero.
Trustee Hanani, before you go to the next item, I, I need to correct something I said when I was answering the questions on the cellphone policy and what the law says. I, I think I heard myself say something that was incorrect. The, the, the law does prohibit use, no matter what. It's either you prohibit the use by you, you, you pass a policy that says you cannot bring them, period, or you have to store them in some manner. I think I said, I, I think I said you prohibited them by bring or by use, but the use is by storing them, like non-use. So I just wanted to be clear about that.
Yeah, thank you, I, I understood it the store, the, the right way, so I think, I think we're good.
Okay, to be clear.
Thank you for the clarification, thank you so much, Ms. Collins. And then the last item that has been pulled is E F two, sorry, I'm getting there, which is the, I know it's a chiller, so, approval to award a CCO chiller project.
And before the, the team, well, the, we've got both procurement facilities and treasury ready to answer any questions you might have, but I wanted to give you a little bit of background as to the, the CCO programming and what they do. So the state, the Texas State Comptroller's Office through the State Energy Conservation Office provides programming that allows us districts to utilize loans, technically low interest loans with repayment terms of fifteen years, to focus on, on repairs to chillers that are exceeding twelve years of life. Back in 2023, the board approved us to move forward with a financing option, and the, the campuses that were identified at the time with the administration that was present at the time, they identified that Franklin, Ninth Grade Center, Moreno, Barron, McGoffin, and White were the ones that had chillers with significant work order submissions and challenges that were ready to be repaired or replaced through this opportunity that we have in financing. But the team is ready to answer any additional questions you might have regarding that.
So before I ask the district to present, because Ms. Sutton, trustee Sutton did pull this item, I want to ask her to go ahead and ask her questions first, and then we can proceed with the presentation.
Hi, thanks for being here. So I just had a couple of questions, and thank you, Ms. Aguita, for a little bit of history. So approval to award the CCO cool, cool chiller project for, it's, the funds are a million dollars, eight hundred twenty-eight thousand. Can you give me, I guess, more of a detailed history or timeline on this? Because Ms. Aguita, hold on, Ms. Aguita said she named other schools, but in this, it's just Franklin and, and Moreno. So can you tell me why it's just Franklin and Moreno here, but?
Those were the, good afternoon, Board of Trustees, Ms. Aguita, my name is Joel Valencia, I'm the Director of Operations. Those were identified based on the years, as you can see Franklin's thirty-five years, and the other chiller is close to twenty-something years. So work orders, just repairs are just, they, they're costly. Plus, we also look at parts availability, a lot of these parts aren't available, we're having to go back to the manufacturer to get these parts, so it's taking longer times for us to get these parts to us. Plus, also the energy efficiency of these, of this equipment. It needs to, we need to upgrade in order for us to save energy, and also for the breakdown of the, of the units, as you can see, remember, McGoffin, that broke down, and we had to get a chiller out there to, you know, a backup chiller. So now we're trying to upgrade these chillers, so energy efficiency, also the time that they work, and then parts, because our guys are also scrambling for parts to try to, to fix these, so that's the reason we, we, we're choosing to upgrade these. Also, this program is one-to-one, we can't retrofit any, anything, it has to be chiller to chiller. It can't be rooftop unit to rooftop unit, or evaporative cooler to evaporative cooler.
Mr. Valencia, can you tell us when the plan is to bring forward for the board's approval Barron, McGoffin, and White?
That'll be in September, we'll have it in September. So we'll begin the planning process on the swapping out of these units, so, so we don't disturb instruction as well. That'll be our team here that works on that, and then we'll have a brand-new, energy-efficient chiller that'll, you know, hopefully keep us going for ten, fifteen years, and then we, we will continue to, to, to monitor every other chiller that we have. But right now, that's the most thing that, the summer months hit, when it's over a hundred, those chillers are starting to work harder.
So is it by, you look at years, that's the, your base?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, and then the, I'm not sure if you can answer this, the, the funding is already, where, where's that, it's something that's already there that?
Yes.
It was this, was it a loan, is that?
It was, it was a loan from the State Energy Conservation Office, and they call it the Cool Chillers Loan, and it's specifically to repair old, old HVAC.
When was this decided? You said 2023?
The board approved, so, the board approved it in 2023.
Okay.
Yes, and so there's a, a process and a cycle to evaluate, and, and the RFP bids and all those different processes that have to take place before the board, but before the work is actually started.
I think that's it, thank you. Thank you, trustee Sutton, trustee Quair?
Just a brief comment, and, and I think you touched on it, sir. I know that Mr. Moore, and I think he had brought up, you know, why not fix Hillside, why not fix these other schools? I know that at a certain point, I had gone with our ex-COO, Mr. Pearson and Mr. Drinkon to the Silva Health Magnet to go look at that chiller, and, and I could kind of see firsthand, like, ah, this is what it is, this is what it does, right? And that was very enlightening, but in a school like Hillside, does, does Hillside, and that's one of my schools, does it even have a chiller?
No, Hillside is a hundred percent evaporative cooler, so we wouldn't be able to use this grant there because it's one-to-one, and it's not a retrofitting from Evap to, to refrigerator.
Okay, so just to be clear, it's not that we're trying to provide, you know, lack of services for other schools that may need that system. Schools like Hillside and other schools would need completely brand-new HVAC systems in order to comply with even getting a loan like a chiller grant.
Yes, sir, and then plus, you know, any money savings that we have with these new chillers, we can allocate towards the other schools.
Great, thank you so much for the clarification, sir.
Thank you, thank you so. Thank you. Thank you so much for that. And with that, I do, can I get a motion on the item? Trustee Sutton, do you want to take the motion? Yeah.
I move that the board approve the award of CCO Cool Chiller Replacement Project, CL425, El Paso ISD RFC SP number 25-017 to Noble General Contractors LLC in the amount of $1,828,000 as presented.
Can I get a second?
Aye, second.
That is a motion by trustee Sutton, a second by trustee Leverage. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries 6-0. And that concludes consent. We will be moving on now to item number nine, reports. Item 9A, review of House Bill 3 CCMR data, TSI2 SAT and Industry-Based Certifications.
Good evening, President Hanani, interim superintendent Aguirre, members of the board, Al Garcia, chief academic officer. This evening, we have for there it is. Sorry, we got to find it. There's so many presentations up here. For your listening pleasure, our update for our annual CCMR update with regards to HB3 goals periodically we are to report to the board in a cycle. This report should have come to the board earlier, and it was pushed. So here we are in August presenting it to you. I'd like to introduce Jason Long, Executive Director for Advanced Academics, and he'll be proceeding with the presentation.
Good evening, President, Board President Hanani, interim superintendent Ms. Aguirre, and Board of Trustees. My name is Jason Long. I'm the Executive Director for Advanced Academics. Like Mr. Garcia had stated, this presentation was really scheduled for June, so we're a little bit behind schedule. I streamlined it a little bit, so it looked a little bit different than the June one, just because I was trying to condense some of the information. I also have with me to assist, I have two right-hand men. I have Mr. Fernando Marquez, who's my Director of CTE, and then I have Mr. Scott Gray, who is my Director of Advanced Academics. So anything, any gaps that I have or lapses, they'll, they can jump in and provide some input. So again, just a reminder for what CCMR is. I know we throw acronyms around a lot, and I try to just kind of re-educate because I know, I live in this world, but other people don't. So CCMR is College Career Military Readiness. So that's what the acronym stands for. So again, the way it's measured really is through what courses the students take, what work-based activities they have while they're in school, or if they want, are they prepared to do the military if they, once they leave high school? Really, the goal of CCMR is what are the students prepared to do the first day that they step out of high school? Are they ready to go to college? Are they ready to go into the career? Are they ready to go in the military? So that's, that's what the state's looking at with CCMR. Again, how is it measured? College readiness. So the first part is through ACT, SAT, IB, coursework, dual-credit coursework, any of that type of thing. Career readiness is work-based learning. If they've gone through a program of study, if they've gotten an industry-based certification. IBC, we throw that around a lot, industry-based certification. Or if they're ready to go into the military, it also kind of gauges that, and if they're ready to do any of those things. I use, this is kind of my diagram that I keep bringing back as kind of my training. I made a little edit, so I'll point that out. But everything in, I call it the egg, but anything in the diagram is, counts for CCMR. So if a student graduates from high school and they enlist in the military, they count for accountability for CCMR for the school. If they take one Onramps course and get, earn the credit, they get CCMR. So again, I don't want to go through it all, but anything in there counts for the school, for the district, for CCMR, just shows the student's ready. In the yellow part is the college readiness part, and that's kind of like the bullseye of the target. That's what we're really trying to get to with our students. That means that they will enter college and not have to do any sort of remedial coursework. So if they get those scores, and so I have TSI2, which is the Texas Success Initiative Assessment, version 2. That's a college readiness exam. If they get those scores in either ELAR and math, that's what we're looking for, then they start college without being any sort of remedial coursework. Same thing with SAT. If they get either of those scores in ELAR or math, they start college without any remedial. College Prep Course is kind of unique to Texas and our area. It's a course that the student takes year-long. If they get a 75 or higher in the English or math, they start college without remediation. So again, everything in that target, in the yellow target is kind of really, every, we want the student to be ready in any way, but that's really the focus. And then ACT, again, it's like SAT, it's another test that the students can take for college readiness. One thing I did want to point out, and this is new on the diagram from the last time I presented, is EPCC is doing a new project called College Connect. So normally, students have to get a certain score in TSI to start dual-credit coursework in high school. Well, EPCC has this initiative. So now students, if they attempt TSI and they don't get the score, they don't get a 945 or a 950, they can take either this speech class or this math class. And they can, if they get a C or higher, they can keep taking other, either math-oriented based classes or reading-based classes. And they don't have to pass the TSI. They could, it's like, almost like gateway classes. And, but the prerequisite is they have to take the TSI. They can't just skip into those classes. They have to take TSI. If they don't get a passing score, then they can take either that speech or that math, and then they can start progressing through dual-credit. So it's really a great option for students that might struggle with the language in TSI and things like that. So I just wanted to point that out, that that's new for this year. They used to do something similar for P-Tech and early college kids, but now this is open for every student. So it's, it's been, it's going to be great for the campuses and the students. So I just wanted to point that out on the diagram. So when we talk about House Bill 3, remember, we have a big outcome goal. We have, and we kind of have a 1A and a 1B in our district. So our, our big 1A is we're trying to get to 87% of our students meeting something in the blue or yellow. Remember, it's anything in the blue or yellow on that diagram. We want 87% of our students to get there. And then the 1B of our goal, oops, sorry. I don't know what happened. Oops. Uh-oh. Do I need to talk from memory? I don't know what happened to the presentation. I don't know. Is it loading still?
Just give it a second.
Okay. I'll just keep hitting it over and over. More time? I don't know what's happening.
Try scrolling down.
Just scroll it. Or this one. How about this one?
There you go.
No, it's not. Do I have to do this by memory?
I think so.
Okay. Let me see if I can do it. It'll be a challenge. So the 1B is excluding, so if you take that diagram that I gave you guys, it's taking out, it's taking out college prep out of that diagram and looking at those, the goals. The goal for that is 68%. So that's our, our second kind of big giant goal. And then under those goals, we have progress measure goals. So we have the first progress measure, I think I can do it. So the first progress measure is TSI2 attainment, and that's actually performance of the students. And our goal for reading was 55%, and we were only at 37%. So we, that's, we still have work to do with that one. For math, it was 37%, and we only got to 32%, so we're still working on that right now. So that's our 3.1. That's our progress measure for 3.1. 3.2 is our IBC. So IBC, we're trying to get to 24% for 2025, and 26% for 2025, for next year. We actually exceeded that goal. We were at 28% on the verifier. But actually, when that data got modified, we're actually at 30%. So we actually met the progress measure 3.2, which was 24. We got to 30. So we're doing really well. So that might be a progress measure when we sit down to re-work them, reconfigure. That might be something that we look at. I think on the next slides that you have, it's talking about, so we're talking about 2024 graduates. They're at 28 or 30%. 2025 graduates are actually at 22% right now, is what we think they're at with our data. So remember that there's a difference. The state changed the accountability system. So that's what you're seeing when we went from 30% and then we're, we went back a little bit for the 25 graduates is because they require, they have to be completers now. They have to finish all three courses and then take the IBC. Whereas the 24 graduates only had to do two courses and then do an IBC. So there is a change in the game a little bit with that. So when we go to three, I think we're on 3.3. 3.3 is actual participation in the TSI2. And our goal is 70%, and it gives you a break. We hit our goal in both math and English for the 12th grade. We are at 70, right, almost like right at it. And I think we're going to get better. I think I had explained to the board previously is we didn't have a culture of everybody taking or being exposed to TSI2. It was just a handful of students. It was your top 10%. It was just a small group. So we're really been pushing and advocating for everybody being exposed and start exposing the kids in ninth, 10th, and 11th grade because it opens all those dual-credit opportunities up. So that's what we've been working on. So 70% isn't where we want to be. We're trying to increase that to 75 and then 80. I think we'll jump up pretty fast over the next little bit of time. You know, in the next year or two, I think we're going to be at 90, 95%. The campuses are really doing a lot to improve that. And then 3.4 is the SAT. So the SAT, the goal for ELAR, I believe, was 49%. And we were at, so you get two scores there. You have a junior and a senior. So I believe our juniors are actually outperforming because they were our spring group, and they were at 45%. But our seniors took it in October, and they're at 43. When you average those out, it's a 44%. And we're trying to get to 49, so we still have some work to do there. And then for math, we are trying to get to 25%. We had seniors that were at 18% in October, and then we had juniors also at 18%. So we're still 7% below there. So I think to summarize for, for our progress measures and our CCMR, we're doing really well overall. We're doing really well with IBCs. The two areas that my team is really working with campuses is TSI, not participation so much because I think we're there, but just performance on TSI, and then also on SAT. So we've got some strategies in place. And again, those are slides that I had in the other presentations. I cut those out, but we're working with the campuses through the curriculum to do more preparation for TSI2. It's embedded in the curriculum, and we're working with teachers and instructional coaches on that. And the same thing for SAT. We're using Khan Academy, and we're being very focused on the 11th graders to help them get ready. So we're doing those things. So those things are in place based on what we see in the data. So, there you go. Questions?
I just have a comment.
Questions?
Sorry, no question, just comment. I'm very impressed by your memory in the presentation. That was great. That was a great presentation. Thank you. And it sounds like we are headed the right way, and I'm very excited for our students to have so many opportunities to, to be college-ready. And so I thank you all for your hard work and very impressive.
I do, I do want, I, there's no way I can memorize all the slides for the IBCs. But you have a breakdown for each of the IBCs because that was requested a couple of board meetings ago, where you get a breakdown of the actual programs of study, the, all that. Sorry, I couldn't, couldn't memorize all that. But we have a breakdown. One comment I did want to make too, because both of my kids are EPISD graduates. So a reminder that CCTE, if there is not a program offered at a particular campus, because I know sometimes that's a concern, you see like Franklin or Coronado or whatever. Remember, bigger schools have more teachers. So there, they, they can give out more, they just have more, there's just more teachers that they can use to create programs of study. But CCTE is kind of our catch-all. My son went to Franklin, and they still didn't have his program. He got on the bus and went to CCTE. So CCTE is, if there is something that isn't offered, those kids have all that opportunity to still get on the bus and go over to CCTE. That's like our catch-all. But I just wanted to make that point too with the IBCs.
Oh, I have a comment.
Trustee Sutton?
I just wanted to piggyback on trustee Beals. I'm very impressed as well. This is a lot of information. It's been put together very well. I appreciate the work. I'm glad that you got to do this presentation because I don't know that a lot of people know about your department and how amazing it is. So I appreciate all the work. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Trustee Leverage?
Thank you, Mr. Long. I have a question, I have a couple of questions regarding TSI numbers. So I know our target was 55% in ELAR. How would you explain landing at 37% rather than 55%? Because we have an incremental two-point increase over the next several years. So how are we going to make up that ground? And what do you think some of the reasons are for falling short?
I, I think for ELAR, when you look at the, the TSI2, there's a big component that's an essay. It's 400 to 600-word essay. And I think if you just look at our data, you know, across, you know, going from, all the way up from, you know, third grade all the way through, I think we, we have a lot to, a lot of work collectively to do with writing. And so I think it kind of shows up on the TSI2 when they have to do 400 to 600-word response. And it has to make sense, and it has to flow, and it has to be at like a college level. So I think that's probably where we get caught with some of our students. Like I said, we're leveraging, we have iXL in the district. And I know, you know, computerized programs aren't an end-all, solve-everything. But it, I think it's a underutilized resource. So what we did is in the English 1 curriculum, we actually tell the teacher where to go in iXL to practice for TSI. So we, so it's not left up to chance. It's actually in the curriculum document. It says, you just covered this piece. Here's the iXL piece that will go with what you just covered, and it's prepping you for TSI2. So we haven't had any strategies like that. So what you're kind of seeing is raw data with, out a whole lot of intervention or strategy. Because we were, we were really focusing on just getting the test in front of kids and working out all those logistics. So now we're shifting our focus this year to more of just the, you know, strategic preparation for both TSI and SAT. Because I think, again, when you look at our data, that's where we really need to, to laser in on. But we have strategies that we're rolling out this year to work on that.
Let me just address that as well. And then kind of thinking about where writing begins. Ms. Sutton will appreciate, appreciate this. It doesn't begin your sophomore year in high school. And so we, as a district and an academics department, understand that writing begins when they're three years old and moving forward through the curriculum. This year, we've launched a new writing initiative for all our schools where we begin having writing portfolios. We wrote a handbook in writing. We did lots of PD over the summer. In fact, in our departments, both our department and school leadership, one of our goals is to improve writing across the curriculum. And so it really begins in kinder and moves through so that we don't wait till our senior year. One of the things that we noticed in our data is our extended constructive responses through the start test. We have about 30, no, about 45% of our kids, is that right? They got a zero? 55% of our third graders actually got a zero. There were 10 points that we left on the table because our kids would not address the ECR. So that's symptomatic of an issue that we, as an academics department, along with Mr. Long's department, are, are working to address those gaps throughout the school year.
Good. I'm very glad that there's a strategy in place. I'm very glad that there's a strategy in place and that you've taken note of, of that gap. I really do appreciate that. In terms of the pacing, do you think the two-point gain incrementally is still a feasible target? Or are you thinking of scaling that back? I mean, I know, we're locked in basically, but can you get to 57 next year?
I actually think now that we have some strategies in place. And then we also, so what we do too is we have the strategy in place. And then we do follow-up monthly meetings with all the principals. So we can look at use, we can track usage in the classroom and things like that. I actually think since there wasn't a strategy and we were at 37%, I think we'll probably initially see some pretty big gains right away once you see a strategy. And then we'll probably level out and then we'll, and then we could build, you know, we could reset our goals from there. There's probably going to be a little bit of a spring, I'm anticipating this year because we're actually intentional about prepping the kids for TSI and intentional about the SAT. I think we're going to see a little bit of, of, of increase or more than a little bit of increase because now we have like strat, like some strategies moving forward.
And, and one thing I do want to compliment you all on is that you're making sure that it's embedded in the curriculum. You're making sure that there are various avenues by which students are getting exposed to this learning early on so that it shows up later in the game. I have the same question for mathematics, but I just wanted to say that I've, I've read that reading as well really reinforces writing skills early on, reading and writing at the same time. You know, we don't want to border on plagiarism though, but it does really help to cultivate a culture of reading throughout the educational experience. So I would really like to, you know, just encourage you all to encourage others to make sure that our students are reading at all levels and that they're reading challenging work. So, but question for mathematics, that's a smaller gap. What strategies do you see for closing that gap?
And the same thing. So in, so we resequenced our math a little bit. So it's now, all of our students are taking algebra, you know, their schedules, it takes algebra in eighth grade, then they're doing algebra II in ninth grade. So what we did in the algebra II curriculum, same thing. We embedded iXL practice because iXL has a math practice as well. And they're in the algebra II curriculum, they're going to be working on iXL for, that's for TSI. Say, it's the same, using the same, you know, same vendor, same approach, but on the math side. And then in 11th grade math for Khan Academy, we have, there's a Khan Academy English and a math. So we have math and English covered in both for TSI and for SAT. And they're embedded in the curriculum. So we're not reliant, like you had stated, we're not reliant on like camps or, you know, after-school or anything like that. It's actually in front of the kids with all of the teachers. That's, that's the goal.
Well, I just want to thank you all for the presentation. It, it really is the highest priority of our district to be academically top-notch, second-to-none in the region for sure, in an A-rated district. I think all of this really works together as sort of a braid of, of various layers of, of investment. And so thank you so much for staying on top of this. One very, very minor point, when it comes to the data breakdown on TSI, I would appreciate it in the future if we had student populations as well by campus so that we understand how many students just offhand are participating. And anything you need from at least me on the board, I would assume the whole board, in terms of getting TSI out as much as possible, with as much participation as possible, we would really be glad to help you with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee leverage. Any other questions or comments? Couple of questions and comments from me. First of all, thank you, Mr. Long. I think you probably did that on purpose so that you could recite by memory and impress everybody watching. It was quite impressive. I do want to highlight some of the bright spots that I see when we compare CCMR criteria on to state averages. I, you know, if you look at where we are with on-ramps, coursework, 17.4% of our students complete a course and get college credit, the state average is 5.7%. There's a lot of really bright spots. And so I appreciate all your hard work in getting our kids to get college coursework completed and get those credits. It helps a lot, cost savings and, and getting them to, you know, pursue that college degree. Some of the concerns that I have, or commentary really involves some equity issues. I, I think we do see some patterns, at least on the CTE side with our IBCs. One thing that immediately pops out is Franklin has 222 and some of the other campuses. I know Burgess was one of the, the lower ones with 24. Can you explain sort of the discrepancy and why we might have, and I'm assuming it's because a lot of these kids get patched through the CCTE program? I think it would also be helpful to know how many of these certifications are coming from CCTE programming. But why do you think there is such a stark disparity between some of these campuses?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Marquez, who's our CTE director. He might have detailed answers for you.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Good afternoon. When we're talking about IBCs, we have different prospectus in terms of how do we view the data. In every, in every high school, we have about five, six different programs of study regardless if we have 20 or 30 teachers by campus. However, know that in every, in every program study that we offer, we also have one or two certifications where the students have the opportunity to, to test out between ninth grade all the way to 12th grade. So the reason why we don't have more students accounted for is because this year, the accountability has moved from just taking one exam and accounted it three or four years ago to today. Now the students have to take the, the IBC, pass it, and also complete two classes in the program study. So there's about probably 15, 20% that we live in out in some campuses. That's, that's one. And two, not all the campuses offer the same type of certifications. While we do a great job at the Career Center, we still have some teachers that we provide the resources, the training, and anything that they can, they can, they can do to test, I mean, to start offering the tests for some of the students. So it's a balance of all different factors is the reason why you see the numbers. By, by the numbers, larger campuses, they're going to offer more in terms of accountability, accountability numbers, they're going to drive the district. Like Franklin, it takes about 20 or 30% of the accountability for the district because of the number of students that they have overall. So that's when you see some of the differences between campuses.
So when I look at this, and I, I understand that the rules have changed and we now have to have the program completion in addition to the certification. But there, you know, sometimes when I look, look at this, I'll see, for example, at Bowie High School, there are no certifications for the educational aid, but yet that's the PTEC pathway. Is there, are there, are they supposed to be finishing that pathway with a certification? Is it because they're not completing like the, the course completion? How, how does, how is that fleshing out?
Well, for that particular one, for educational aid, the students have take the exam or they actually completed work, not until they graduate completely, completely out of all their CTE classes at the end. So again, it has to do with their computer starters, that's something that it changed, especially this school year. But know that in every program study, we have an opportunity for the student to test. We've been pushing campuses, administrators, counselors, students for them to help us promote, but sometimes not, not all the, I mean, not everyone will take those opportunities. Not all, I mean, not this year, they probably went into the following year. And sometimes they don't even report it. So we're working with the campuses and counselors for us to make sure that we catch them earlier instead of having to wait until the summer.
Which leads me to my next question. That's a good segue because I know that these certifications are very expensive. It would be helpful for us to know what certifications we pay for versus what certifications tests are actually being utilized since we're not necessarily getting the certifications on the other side. So that might be good to provide in some sort of a, a report, how many certification tests we pay for per year for a program of study versus how many tests were actually taken by students in the district, just to see, you know, what those spends are producing, I think would be helpful. But thank you for the clarification and the information. I have one other non-IBC-related question for, one for Mr. Long and one for Mr. Garcia. One thing I did notice on the outcome goals excluding college prep, and I really appreciate your attention to this, this was a huge push of mine to get this data without the college prep course because it often diluted what we were seeing in terms of outcome goals. I did notice that there was a pretty stark discrepancy with some of our student populations. You know, when you look at, for example, including college prep, our African-American and Hispanic students dropped very, very significantly without the college prep courses, something that just stood out to me. If maybe we could have some sort of a root cause analysis or dig into that a little bit more, it, it was a significant enough drop that I wanted to sort of call that out. And then the last thing that I wanted to, to broach, and actually, I think you'll hear Dr. Leverage and I speaking quite a bit about reading lately because before he said that, I was thinking, well, the best way to become a writer is to become a reader. And I know that's something that we are starting to talk about now, especially as we're taking cell phones away from students, wanting to replace those with books and making this really a culture of reading and bringing, bringing that back. I think that is going to be a huge priority of ours to see kids reading more and to see them with more books. But one thing I thought about as you were talking about trustee Sutton's concerns about what are we doing for SAT prep and TSI, it would be great, just as the board begins to establish more academically-oriented goals for the district, if we could begin to understand cohort-to-cohort movement and really start to show the public what it looks like when a child progresses from one grade to the next in academic achievement so that we're, we're seeing the work that we're doing kind of in real time. It's so difficult when you look at high, high school outcomes because you're right, so much of that work does start very, very early on. And by the time you're getting into the secondary levels in middle school and high school, it's a lot of catching up to do for teachers. So I think it would just be really great for us to start establishing a cadence where we're able to see the work that we're doing and that you all are doing in real time so that we can start helping, provide the support, the resources, and just, you know, a, a show really to the public of what things look like when it comes to achievement so that we can temper the expectations and create, you know, and start raising the bar, so to speak. But overall, really glad to see this. And again, congratulate you on all those really great bright spots, including, you know, the, the college coursework. I think that's just so important that we're graduating so many students that have an associate's degree or that are graduating with college coursework. So congratulations for that and I look forward to seeing more reports on this in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that will take us to item 9B, the 2024-25 State and Federal Accountability Report.
Good afternoon, Board President Hanani, interim superintendent DeGerry, and Board of Trustees. My name is Christine Ferret, Executive Director of Strategic Planning. Myself, as well as our accountability, academics, and school leadership team, will be sharing with you a little bit about our Accountability 2025. So TEA just Friday released the 2025 Accountability. And we will walk through, first, just an update with our district. Our district is a summary of all of our schools and then share like we do each year with our accountability, our academic response to the data, and our school leadership response. So I'll start us off. In this report, you will have the slideshow here, which just shows some of the summary pieces. But you also have uploaded in the docket your official 2025 Accountability Report. And in the presentation, the report, just to give a little preview, you'll see our overall district rating increased a letter grade, up three points. Our number of schools that earned an A or B increased by 14 with 53% of campuses earning an A or B. You'll see that our star performance overall increased three percents with 2% gains in Mass Science and Social Studies. You'll see when we jump into domain two, that 30 schools showed double-digit gains in academic growth from the prior year, or 83% of campuses improved. You'll see that in our CCMR, we increased 2% as was shared earlier. Overall, EPISD campuses performed better than similar schools, and that's outlined in domain 2B, 70% of our campuses. We also received distinctions, 122 total distinctions earned by 39 campuses. And you'll see that we have continued a support needed in graduation and want to continue on the math growth area. So looking and digging into it, our first slide shows just a summary overall of our accountability system. And if you look at the little bottom where it says in number seven, the details of this slide is on page seven of your report. It tells a little bit about each of the domains, but basically TEA breaks accountability into three lenses. And then together with a combination of a best of and domain three, gets an overall rating. So student achievement is our domain one, school progress, which is measured in two different ways, is our domain two, and closing the gaps is domain three. On the bottom of this slide, you'll see how EPISD performed in 2024 and the increase in 2025. And EPISD increased in all of the domains with an overall score of an 80. When we break this down into our campuses, you'll see in 2025, the numbers of each letter grade compared to the prior year. And you'll see overall 53% of our campuses earned an A or B, significant gains in those areas. And when we look at our campus highlights, we had 37 campuses increase one or more letter grades. We had 14 campuses increase two letter grades and two campuses increase three letter grades. And then you'll see a full breakdown of each of the campuses on page eight of the report, and this is the summary, breaking it down by campus type, elementary, pre-K, middle, and high school. When we look at our distinctions, schools can earn distinctions in seven different areas with elementaries up to six areas. We had 122 total distinctions, 39 campuses earned one or more distinction designation, and four campuses earned all available distinctions. Page nine shares a little bit more detail in that as well. In this next part, I'm just going to give a little bit more detail for each of the domains, domain one, two, and three. So our first one is student achievement. And for our elementaries, that is the star performance at the approaches, meets, and masters level. Overall, we increased two points in there, with the largest increase really being at the meets level, which was, has been our goal over the few years, is really to build not just passing at approaches, but at the meets. For our high schools, it also includes college readiness and graduation. And so the bottom row shows the actual data. And then at, at the top, it shows kind of what letter grade it scales to. So 89% of our graduates met CCMR, 89.1% of our graduates, percent of our students graduated. And those were the two pieces. Both graduation and CCMR is a year delayed. So both of those represent the class of 2024, with graduation being the better of four, five, and six. Looking a little more detail into the college and career readiness, I won't go into this one too much because I know you just had a full presentation. But when we looked at our final accountability data, you'll see overall, every year we've increased in the, the past few years, even though TEA used to be 60% meeting CCMR, gave you an A, they bumped it up to 88%. But if you look overall, in really every critical area of CCMR, we increased two or more points. And then this is that same breakdown for each campus. When we look at graduation rate, that's still an area of growth. It is delayed a year. It meant- It measures the better of a four-year, five-year, or six-year. So your five and six years are really your class of 23, your class of 22, and it's if they didn't graduate the year before that they come back and finish. So this is a breakdown overall of our district and each of our campuses. And TA does require a 95% for a solid C. Our second area on accountability is school progress, and TA measures school progress in two different ways. The first way is our academic growth, and that is the percentage of students that grow a year or more in a year. And then the second way is relative performance, how the school does compared to similar schools. So when we look at the student growth, that is the area where we really showed the most gains, with a 13% increase in the percentage of students that grew a year or more in math compared to 2024. And they also share with us how our students do that had not passed the prior year. And you can see that we had gains in those students passing in their following year. And the relative performance shows that at a B level that overall El Paso ISD schools are outperforming similar schools with similar demographics. 70% of our campuses did get a rating that was better than similar schools. And the last domain that TA looks at when they come up with our overall accountability is closing the gaps. This is the one that has a lot of details and numbers. Every campus has four student groups that get evaluated, and they get evaluated on a variety of components. Every component is evaluated against a state target. So for purposes of the district overall, we included the three ethnicities that are the most common. Campuses will all get evaluated based on all students, two ethnicities, and then one group called high focus, which is all of the high focus areas economically disadvantaged, emergent bilingual, special ed, foster, homeless, and migrant. And so when we compare district as a whole compared to the state targets, one of the first components is what percentage of your students are at meets level in reading and math? And we met all of the targets in all of our student groups for meets level, reading and math. You get a full three or four points out of four if you meet those targets. If you are not quite at the target, but you have shown significant growth toward the target, then you get two points. And so in the next area, growth in reading, we, on almost all of our groups, hit the target, and on our all students, we made progress, are almost at the target. And on growth math, we got credit for growth and really closing that gap, making big improvements. But we're not quite at the target yet. On the bottom, you can see for CCMR, we have well surpassed all of the targets with all of our student groups. And in overall star average, we have met the target in our, at our Hispanic, white, African American, and high focus, and made progress toward the target in our all students. For their federal graduation rate, that one we're still, that is still a work in progress. So that summarizes state accountability. State accountability has the three domains, it gives a letter grade of an A through F, and there's also federal accountability. So federal accountability really focuses on just domain three. And so with federal accountability, there is no A or good score. They only identify areas of concern. And so we do, they do have a label called comprehensive school, comprehensive support for campuses that are not performing well in domain three. And once you get that label, it takes two years of good scores to get out, two years of progress. So what we're very excited to share is we did have eight schools get the label last year, and eight out of eight made the progress. So they have year one progress complete, and if they make their progress this year, all eight of those will exit. We did, however, have one school newly identified, and that was Murfree. We'll just share with yourselves and the public, all the individual data for every indicator for every campus can be found at the TA, the Texasschools.gov website. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to our academic and leadership response.
Good evening. And unlike Mr. Long, I'm not going to be able to memorize every single thing on this wheel of progress. But this wheel of progress really paints a picture and a narrative about the work we did last year. What you may not know is the work begins in June. So we are already well into this wheel of progress. So I'll start by, in the yellow puzzle piece up there in the wheel of progress, talking about our summer school, Summers Teacher Institute. This happens over June, about 600 teachers across four days. We bring teachers in, it's voluntary, they might go to one session or multiple sessions. We had our team from dual language, sped, advanced academics, literacy, math, and the first time, for the first time ever, we offered Montessori courses, which were very much appreciated by some of our teachers. So that happened in June. Then we, the next piece is the teacher connect. If you will, that's a Jabba-like day the first week back during teacher, stat development days at the beginning of school year. Imagine a PLC at the district level across campuses and across content to ensure that they're ready and able to address the content that's coming for the next school year. The third piece of that is the principal leadership. This happens in the summer. Again, we do a deep dive into district systems. Principals and APs work to build on plans that connect to district initiatives. As I mentioned earlier, this year, one of the big presentation pieces was the writing initiative. We're very excited about that. We wrote a handbook, really gathered all the resources, and began to leverage that data. As we said, a B, I know earlier on, some of the folks say we are barely a B. It's still a B, and we're very proud of the work that we've done collectively as an organization, with school leadership, and moreover, the students and parents and childrens in the classrooms every single day. We earned that letter. As difficult as it was, we earned it, and we're very proud of it. So part of the principal initiatives were rebooting our RTI process and then looking at early childhood, and lastly, ensuring that all, we had a level-set playing field for special education law, which is very important, as you know. Next on that wheel of progress was pulling aside our instructional coaches academy. So this year, we repurposed the CTCs, our campus teaching coaches. We give them a new job description, realign their evaluation, and align their job descriptions to the actual coaching of teachers in the classrooms where they log their coaching sessions. We retooled them, and we really are hoping that that makes more of an impact than it did this year. Soon after that, we brought in our institute, our Intervention Institute. It was a week-long course that focused on student data to help support our most vulnerable students. One of the data slides Ms. Ferret mentioned was kids that had never passed before and now have passed. That's a direct result of the efforts for these people that work on our campuses every single day. And so that's the work that's happened over the course of the summer. Here we are, third week of school, and as the father of the Acadus support system, I can tell you it's alive and well. It is now at Acadus 2.0. Last year, we gathered all the campus requests for every bit of support that lives under the academic umbrella, and we would dole them out as an agent. I'd send it to special ed, I'd send it to early childhood, wherever the work was being asked of academics from the campuses. This year, we retooled that system so that the work is more streamlined. If it's a special ed request, it goes directly to a special ed staff. I'm having a little bit of consternation because I'm pulling away from it a little bit, so I don't necessarily understand where the hotspots are. I have to really dig a little deeper, but I'm very confident in my staff and their ability to ensure the work gets done. Remember, that's a 24-hour response to whoever submitted that Acadus and a two-week service window. That was unprecedented in our district, and I'm very proud to say that principals and staff alike have said that's been such a blessing to our schools and the support that we're extending. Then another support that we included this year was the job-embedded PD, where we actually go to schools, we meet with principals, we customize the PD to assert the notion of those highly qualified instructional opportunities for teachers. And then they do, in most cases, either a day or day and a half of training with teachers on campuses. We also have our curriculum internalization and just-in-time videos where our teachers are able to look on and preview the curriculum in a video format. It's readily accessible and easily digestible by our teachers. It helps to understand the curriculum and the resources available within each of those resources. And then lastly, here's where we are now, really and truly, we're beginning our reflection. As camp, in partnership with school leadership, we're beginning to look at, how did I do, how did my school as an organization do last year with all the student data points? It is a document that marries the Holdsworth leadership values and the five principal standards embedded to the T-PRESS evaluation process, where select principals, everybody probably does it, but we select the principals that we need to have come before a small committee and kind of share with us, what were some of your powerful moves that you made this year? And if it didn't quite pan out, you know, how are we changing those, leveraging those leadership moves this year? So to make sure we positively impact student learning outcomes. And then I think another area where, that you'll find on the wheel is the campus support plans. Last year, it's kind of tied to the next, the next piece of the puzzle, is the trend walks. You're all familiar, last year, I stood before you, I described the trend walks. It's a multidisciplinary team that goes out, it's a progress monitoring tool for curriculum implementation, for rigor, for everything that we want to see, that's also tied to the superintense evaluation. And we noticed that there were, there were some data points that we needed to leverage. So we did trend walks, and in March, we had about 3,800 trend walks, trend walks in classrooms, observations, and trends over time. And we decided at that point, when I met with the team, let's pause on that. We already know where the growth and the areas of opportunities are. How can we support those areas? So we sat down, looked at the, all the data, our interim assessments, our common assessments, even map data, and we planned out interventions for 24 campuses. We sat with the principal, we said, here's our plan. Do you have a plan for the next 20 days before start? If not, let's marry our plans together. And we planted and had our team actually live at the campus for a couple days a week, primarily because if you understand school improvement and academic success, it's the follow-on and follow-through that's the most important piece. So we ensured that those plans were carried out over the course of the 20 days right before start. So this year, rather than wait till March, we're going to have smaller, shorter cycles of school improvement. We'll go and do trend walks for about six weeks, that's an adjustment to our practice. We'll digest data and then go and support campuses for two weeks directly. So that will lead into intercession. We'll do it again for Christmas and again in March, and then we'll have a better scope of the work that's ahead of us to ensure that all of those students that are in the most at-risk situations, their needs are being met, and our schools that are falling are, you know, I will tell you that these ratings were amazing. We celebrated for about five minutes, and then we said, okay, what are we doing differently to ensure that, if you think about the sigmoid curve and that data as it's coming up, what are we going to pivot to ensure that the success continues to grow? So these briefly are the wheel of progress in the academics wheelhouse, and these are the things we implemented last year. There's plenty more detail about each of these things in the workbook. And with that, I will turn it over to school leadership.
Good evening. So for school leadership, we have three big rocks this year that we're really focusing on. We're looking at our instructional leader teams, our professional learning communities, and coaching with principals, and the work that we do as executive principals, assistant superintendents, how are we supporting that work? We saw that we, that the area in domain one is the area that we have the biggest growth, right, that we need to make. And we know that that comes in teacher planning, but that happens in a PLC, and that starts at the leadership level with our instructional leader teams. So really, as our, as supervisors, how are we going out and supporting those principles and that work that happens and takes place daily? So it's a lot of goal setting, right? That collaborative goal setting, looking at the data, going back to the plans that Mr. Garcia shared, those data reflection teams, what, what were the things that worked and what are the things that we need to change and do differently in supporting that work through data? And then the observation, so observing not just principals in action, but going into classrooms. We've been out on campuses, executive principals, walking side by side with principals, going into classrooms, going into classrooms without their principals and observing and what is happening, and really targeting campuses that we see where we have had growth so we can mirror that success, but also campuses that didn't show as much growth and what supports can we provide for them, and then giving the principals that feedback, having that conversation with the principal, sitting down with them. And these, this is what we're observing, and this is how we feel that we can move forward and providing the support for those principals and developing those action plans. But it's going back to, as Mr. Garcia was saying, in a sick week cycle, it's not just a one-time, it's constantly going back and looking at that, how are we improving? How are we using the data on a daily basis to make changes, to be strategic, and leveraging that data that's there? And then monitoring that progress. So we monitor the progress of the executive, of the principals, and giving them feedback. And it's, it's just a cycle, and then that reflection. So really using our time with the principals on campus as we're in, in the building, looking at student work, looking at student data, and looking at those instructional leadership moves that the principals are making, and how can we support principals to make the best decisions to move the academic progress forward? And so we talked about last year, we started documenting our feedback, our coaching cycles with principals on strike, and this year, we've added our campus visits. So each time we go out to a principal, a campus, and we visit with them, we document that through strike, just like a principal will give a teacher a walkthrough ediforia, right? So it's the same process, we are giving them feedback, this is what we saw, this is what we talked about, here are some suggestions, some recommendations. And then really, when we come back again, okay, this is what we talked about last time, what are we seeing this time? And so for the first two weeks, from the 28th through the August 11th, I almost said 9/11, August 11th, we had 113 documented campus visits. And so that's giving the principals real-time feedback and not waiting until two weeks later we make it back out. We, as soon as we're off-campus, we're giving that feedback right away so that they can take action on that, and then we follow back up with them. And so we have the executive principal level and then assistant superintendents, we're also doing that same work together.
Good evening, everyone. So basically, under school transformation, we're having, we have the tier-three campuses, and we're doing basically the same but more in-depth, kind of like using a magnifying glass, and working with principals and ILT members. This year, we're looking into observation feedback, we train all principals and their teams, and this is a very pres- This is a very prescriptive training. So principals go in, and they are in assistant, or assistant principals, they can go in, and exactly pinpoint where the lesson is, come back and give the teacher feedback. And in turn, I watch this feedback, this observations and feedback, they're recorded, and I watch this, and I give the, I give a feedback to the teacher, I mean, I'm sorry, to the principal as well. Another item that we're very, that we're using very closely is the aggressive monitoring. And this is to ensure that tier-one instruction is of high quality. And what this is, is basically ensuring that the objective that is being taught, it's the kids are actually learning. So before the kids leave the class, teachers can have, make sure they intervene in, before the students leave, and you don't have to wait till tutoring class to address a need there. Administration actually turned this around to teachers, so they're very well aware also at what needs to be done. We're also collecting, just like the writing portfolio that academics has, we're doing it with all the core subjects, reading, math, social studies, and science, and we're looking into- into- Not moving. Okay, there you go. So we're looking into very small cycles to look at the data and to ensure that, that there's interventions and things are being in place, or the plan is changing as we move along, and not have to wait six weeks, nine weeks, or the day of the benchmarks to make those changes. We're looking very closely at monitoring subgroups, and a huge example of this could be Canyon Hills, they were a targeted school because of a subgroup, so we looked at very closely throughout the year last year, looked at this group to ensure that they would no longer be a targeted improvement school this year, and they did come out and with, with distinctions as well. So this is one thing we're going to be looking at very closely with all these schools. And finally, our ACE campuses, they attended a training, it's called Capturing Kids' Heart, and this is to start with systems and procedures to ensure that there was a great positive culture with kids and teachers. Thank you.
At this time, if there are any questions for any of us here, or any systems or protocols that we have in place, or we have our full academics team support here.
Thank you so much for that presentation. Any questions or comments? Justy Sutton? Can you explain what happens with the, the ACADESK? Like, does someone come out? Like, what happens with that process?
So let's say, we have, I'm a campus principal, and I've hired two brand-new kindergarten teachers, never been in a classroom. We have a little QR code or a little link, and we actually fought for retail space on the webpage, so as you log in, we now have our own little icon, easy access. A principal, assistant principal, or curriculum coach, our ICs, can submit a request, that goes directly to an agent. When we first started, I was the only agent handling for about a month, and it just became a part-time job, which is a great thing, because campuses were asking for support. So in that case, the principal says, I need help with my early childhood teachers. I would route that request immediately to the director of early childhood, who would leverage her team to go out. So within 24 hours, my expectation as the chief of academics is that we make contact with the principal. How do you want the support? Do you want it to overzoom? Do you want me to go out there? We do, I can go to a PLC, I can bring your teachers off campus. The service-minded approach, I think, was something that was kind of missing. And then, within two weeks, it has to be completed, and the entire team here will tell you that I now, I close tickets as well. I'm only, I'm the only one that closes them. And so if I see a ticket, is, I go on the calendar, after two weeks, I start sending, I was going to say nasty grabs, but I'll say, I'll send love notes to the team saying, hey, where are we on this? This ticket is about to expire. And I'll change the color on the agent desk, so it turns red. Or I'll say, this is past due. Or sometimes what happens is a principal requests assistance, and it's tough getting, you know, FaceTime with our principal, and we can't really meet, so I'll say, okay, principal, you asked for this, it's two weeks now, if you still need support, fill out another one, because it's just going to be lingering there in the system. My gosh, we closed out 6,000 tickets last year across all campuses. I can track that by campus, I can, so it's two-facing. One is campus support, and the other time, anybody in, any, any time, anyone from the academics department, whether it's GT, advanced academics, early childhood, special ed, dual language, teaching and learning, all of the, all of the umbrella, then that person who goes out there, if it's not requested, oh, I was out there helping the teachers during a PLC, they have to enter that on the ACADESK system. So that is enable, an accountability piece for me, to see where the people are deployed. And then we close those out immediately, because it's just a, a service call. But at the end of the day, if, I remember there was a situation where we lost our early childhood director, and, and the previous superintendent said, well, do we need to replace that? And I pulled up the ACADESK tickets, there had been hundreds, pages after pages, of support that had been provided to early childhood, and so I could share the need with her. So again, the ACADESK system is a very tight system, and I'm, like I said earlier, that I'm having a little bit of consternation, because I've moved away a little bit from it. But I do know that we're continuing that process, and principals really have come to rely on it as a system. They didn't believe us at first, that 24-hour, and we proved them wrong, so.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Yes, Colonel.
Sorry, if you guys could look at page 11 on, on the sheets, I have a pretty big question. Yeah, right, CCMR is, is, is three components, college, career, and military. El Paso has one of the highest enlistment rates in the Army across the entire United States. I know we have kids taking the ASVAB, and I know we have a whole lot of them joining our, our military, and we have a 0.0% rating on this. If, if I can do anything to help you with collecting the right data, or connecting you with the right people, you guys are leaving points on the table that would probably make this an A instead of a B in CCMR. So I'm happy to help connect you with other people inside of our military to get data, if that's what it requires, but we're missing a whole bunch there.
Thank you, Colonel.
And TEA had gone two years putting that on pause while they worked with the military to capture that enlistment data, and so this will be the first year, last year's graduates were the first-year graduates, but 25, 26 will be the first-year accountability, that it will show up for anybody in this state. The whole state was on a two-year pause. But no, thank you so much, and thank you for noticing I had meant to bring that up, because we, for a couple of years, we kind of went by CCR while we went back, and so that is what happened.
And we will tap into you and your resources, I promise.
Thank you. Justy Queer?
Yes, so on page 12, I, I may have kind of answered the question just by reading the top part where it says the graduation rate is only 20% of how we're rated, I guess, per, per campus. But I just want to make sure, so that last sentence, right, under this new system, EPISD's overall graduation rate of 89.1 scales to a 60 or a D for accountability. This reflects a decrease in the graduation rate from 89.9% in 2024. So what was the, I guess, the old scaling system or the old grading system, where, is it true that it would have been 89B, 90A?
Graduation is a very tricky one, so this is domain one, and the state actually calculates graduation a little differently for domain one and domain three. The scale of what it takes to get an A or B did increase two years ago, but because it's the better of four-year, five-year, or six-year, and any increases that are done are sometimes like class of 21, 22. So last year, the class of 21 was used, this year, the class of 22 was, well, I mean, it's different for each campus, but it is a little bit of a difficult one to, for immediate changes to show up in the graduation system. So what, I know that Mr. Paz has taken significant work with our campuses on some systems, some tracking, dropout prevention, so once a student doesn't graduate, how to bring them back so that at least by five and six-year, we do get them to graduate. And I'm not sure if you wanted to add any more to that, but that, that is one of the pieces, is that six-year down the, the road, it's, it is a very delayed.
Okay. Yeah, I was just wanting a clarification, because when you look at the graduation rates, right, you know, when you see Franklin and El Paso High, just for an example, 95.3% and 95% respectively, but then their overall scores or grades are 75, it's like, where's the disconnect there, right? Because the graduation rate is so high?
Yes.
Okay.
Justy Leverage?
Thank you very much for the presentations, as well as all of the work that you're, you're putting into this. It is showing, we are heading in the right direction. That is pretty clear from this information. We need to get to the destination, we need to get to that goal of the A rating. I think that what we can do as a board to support this work is to look at all of our work through the lens of, of academics. This is our highest priority. If we can't look at student outcomes, if we can't look at our work as a board through student outcomes, first and foremost, I think we're blind. So I really do appreciate what you're doing. I have a few questions regarding transformation at Guillen, Murfree, and Cooley. I know that, I've heard a rumor that A ratings are very difficult to come by if you have a D or an F school in your district. So I want to know specifically beyond ACE, what is going to be done at those three schools?
So at Murfree was an, it's an ACE campus, it's been reconstituted. So every teacher, every employee there was asked to reapply for their jobs, and we've been guided by the state, very few were accepted back. So we have an all-star team there. We're very excited about the opportunity to ensure that moves forward, and you are correct, we cannot be an A-rated district with any Ds or Fs, period. That's automatically off the table. So our goal is, in the interim, to get all the schools off that D and Fs, which considerable amount of work was done this year, and our hope is that next year we'll have zero. But with regards to Cooley, it is going to be a STEM academy. I, I agree with what you're saying, it is one of our most vulnerable campuses, and right now we're absent a leader, and we will hopefully be intervening very soon, looking for that all-star leader to ensure that that team is being guided forward. And those school, transformation schools, the seven, are underschooled academics now, on, on academic side of the table, of the house. And as I shared with the team before, kind of like when you get on an airplane and you're asked to, if sudden drop in cabin pressure should occur, as a parent, you put your-
The other one.
And then the little one, so-
On yourself first.
I shared the team, I shared with the team, we're going to make sure that our most struggling schools get oxygen first, and then that we breathe life into the rest that need it and support. So definitely, it's on our radar, we're having discussions all the time about that. And again, the level of concern for those two schools in particular is, is palpable, so. Guillen, I have, I have no doubt, Guillen is an F, I have no doubt by the end of this year, they will not be an F. I'm predicting very high scores for that school, also been reconstituted, having a dynamic leader that's just doing amazing things with that school community and those children, very deserving of that, so I'm hoping we have the same results with Murfree and Cooley.
And Cooley, I know it's a receiving school through destination district redesign, has that caused any problems? Is there, is enrollment stable there? Is it-
It is, it's stabilized. It is going to be a STEM academy, so we're very excited about all the supports we put in place. We do have an interim principal there, who was the principal of RUSK, who if you think about the presentation, raised the, the rating on that score from an F to a B, three-letter grade, so she's very capable, but we still want somebody committed there that's going to be there for the long term, for the success of those students in that community.
And that is something to really celebrate as a campus leader, taking three-letter grades and clearing them like it was nothing, so that's really important.
Well, it wasn't nothing, but-
Oh, no, like it was nothing.
Yes.
It's, it is impressive on that front end in terms of the progress. In terms of the graduation rate, what strategies do you all have in mind, and how are you working with campus leadership and campus teams to, to make sure that, that that number really, really improves?
So the first thing I want to call out is, we do have a graduation coach at each campus. And so first and foremost, make sure we're leveraging that personnel and that support at the campus. I think there needs to be a lot more coordination with all the supports at a campus to ensure that we focus from here till our graduations in May, that we're keeping track of kids, we're ensuring that we don't wait till the semester, that we would look at every grading period, and maybe even every, every interim progress reporting period, to see where are the kids that are falling through the cracks, and who are the, who are the potential dropouts? Again, working with our counseling team, with the grad coaches, with school leadership, to ensure those systems are in place in a very purposeful manner, because again, we do all these wonderful things, and, you know, for the kids that make it across the stage. And we need to ensure that we're also keeping an eye on those kids that aren't making across that stage. So I don't know if you want to add anything?
Yeah, just something to note, that group of cohort that's being monitored was the last group of COVID students. And so having that group really struggle through completion has been the biggest challenge, and so that's why it's impacting us now at this time. I'm very excited about what the future looks like, because last year's graduation rates were the highest we've had in five years. And so we know that the work post-COVID, just, we had to get through that cohort of kids to see the transition of all the work and the effort were happening. One of the things we have to be cautious about is making sure that when students stop coming to school, that we don't forget about them at the end of the year. We have to continue to find them, and so we'll have a big event in September to kind of bring back some of the students who didn't return to us this year, the year before, and the year before that. And so right now, the graduation coaches are making a strategic effort to find those students and bring them back, if not enroll with us, but enroll somewhere, because that's really the key piece, that you have to be enrolled in a, in a Texas school or a public school. And a lot of our students either have chosen not to re-enroll into a school, or we haven't been able to document that, or they've no longer in the country, we have to document that effectively. So it's, it's finding the kids and then providing that service. We've opened up CCTA, so any student that has been considered a dropout in the last two years will have automatic enrollment. So that will be kind of our saving opportunity for students who don't want to go back to their home campus, because they've been gone so long. CCTA will be that opportunity for them to get re-enrolled within EPISD if they choose not to go to their public school. Sometimes with age, it may not be the best choice, but CCTA can take students that are a little bit older.
I, I think that, that's, that's all very strong, I think that's a good strategy to move forward. In terms of the seven schools that you've, you've, you've been monitoring progress, do you see any risks there? Do you need any particular resources to get them over the threshold? And thank you, Mr. Paz.
What I would say is, we have everything we need. We have to implement what we have. School improvement is not innovative, it's not exciting, it's not fancy, it's redundant, it's boring, and it's predictable. But the follow-on and follow-through pieces is where we drop the ball sometimes. So I can assure you, much like the ACADESK, our team is committed to ensuring that we follow on and follow through with support, with leveraging the tools that we have and the people that we have, to make sure that that progress gets made.
Well, again, I just wanted to thank you all. You are the team who will get us there, along with all the teachers, along with all the principals, you will get us to this destination, and it has to be that goal of an A rating. Thank you for heading in the right direction. We are very proud, I'm very proud of, of the work that you're doing. Keep it up, and if we can be of assistance in, in closing the gap on attendance in particular, and, and doing anything, however, you know, public-facing it might be, however embarrassing it might be, I want to do whatever we can do to get kids into schools and to make sure that they stay there. So thank you all very much, and, and let's move the needle forward further.
Thank you. I just want to close by saying that last year I stood here before you, and I shared with you that all throughout the year, the data seemed to be pointing in the right direction, right? I kept saying that over and over again, and I quoted the commissioner one time, and I said, I want you all to remember that a rising tide lifts all boats. And as we look at all of our data, our subgroups, our most vulnerable kids, we are making the progress that some school districts never make, and some take three or four years to make. We did it in one year. Now that we've refined our processes and our accountability pieces, I'm confident that we're, we, we won't just be barely a B, we might even be close to a N. But again, I don't want to minimize the effort as was done earlier, it's really hard to hear that, because it is on the backs of children and parents and teachers and administrators that carry the weight of school performance, and we stand on their shoulders, and we don't acknowledge that work. So again, we appreciate your support, and we're here to serve.
Thank you so much. Justy Leverage said basically everything I could have said. I do remember last year, and I remember how hopeful you were, and I remember what a difficult meeting it was for us, because we had declined, and that was a hard pill to swallow for the entire board and, and for the district. So it is really a great reprieve that we are heading in another direction. It mirrors a lot of your tenure here, so, you know, congratulations to you for the team that you've built, and the work that you've done, and that you're doing, and the commitment that you have to doing this for children and for all of the students that we serve in EPISD. It is a commitment on our end that we are excited to see to fruition in terms of really wanting this district to rise to its potential. I think Jack said it a few times, A rating, I'll say it as well. That's the goal, we know you can get there, and we're very excited for the district that we're on the right track again. So thank you all for your work. I think Jack asked most of the tough questions, I know graduation rate continues to be a concern. And I think as we move into our team of eight training and our outcomes-based governance, we look forward to working with you directly to dig into that data and to have a very data-driven governance role, so that we are doing that work together. And I do not want to miss out on thanking the teachers for their commitment, and the parents for their involvement, and the children, who are the ones that are in those desks that are taking the test.
and the parents for their involvement and the children who are the ones that are in those desks that are taking the test. You know, I think it's, it really takes all of us to build that culture. So I thank you for, for being a part of it. And with that said, thank you for this report.
I think that's it, isn't it? That takes us to item ten, items on next month's agenda.
So as we prepare for the September board meeting, we'll be bringing, bringing to you three reports. First of all, the fourth quarter financial report, facilities update and transportation update. As we consider auction items, we're looking at the review of the annual investment report and adoption of the investment policy, which is an annual process that we bring to the board. You will approve the authorized sellers of investments and provider of officer training. And then we will present to you our twenty-five, I apologize, our twenty-six, twenty-seven budget development calendar. Budget season starts in a few weeks technically. And so we'll present to the board our, our proposed calendar of those activities.
Thank you. And with that, we move to item eleven, adjournment. The time is eight twenty-five and this meeting is adjourned.